I'd like to call the May 2, 2017 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session, could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen, Finley, Moore, Peck, and Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, before we start the Pledge of Allegiance, I guess there was an employee of the county that was killed on an ATV accident today, so let's just have a moment of silence before our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with a routine and just sprawl.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers, only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard, on any item at the end of the meeting. So in the interest of time, I would propose that we move items 6A through 6D, the special presentations, and item 9A, which is a continuation of the Creekside Public Hearing, prior to our next agenda, item 4. Are there any objections, Council? Okay, so that's going to be our new order. So we have here some guests from our sister city, Chino, Japan. Mayor Yanaki Daira and Janice Raban, President of Longmont Sister Cities, is here to introduce our guests from Chino.
President of the Longmont Sister Cities Association, thank you for inviting our delegation from Chino, Japan, to speak tonight. As you know, we are celebrating 27 years of friendship with our Japanese sister city. It is my honor to introduce Mayor Yanaki Daira and Mr. Kasai from the Chino International Club, and Mr. Kasai will introduce the rest of the delegation.
So, we have Mr. Nomura from Japan as a Nomura Unison CEO. And Mr. Ueda from Chino City as official of the manager of the Commercial Chamber. And Yoriko Kasai from Chino as a chief board of the Kokusai Club in Chino. And Michiko Oyazaki, board of the Kokusai Club in Chino City.
Hi, I'm Mayor of Chino City, Chiyokazu Yanagi-Dairi, very long name. I am glad to see you.
It was 10 days after, and I am very glad to have a next opportunity to visit Longmont again.
I'm really be honored and feel pleased to see Mr. Coombs and all the city hall members again.
I'd like to thank you again for your warm friendship and exchange during the 27 year of the sister city relationship.
We have two key objectives for this visit.
First is to say thank you to 25th anniversary of the sister city friendship in two years ago, and I couldn't make it at the time.
And the second one, now the Chino City is a city of the population of 56,000.
It is a small city, but we have a lot of companies.
We'd like to seek for the possibilities of economic relationship with Longmont high-tech industries.
When we can develop the relationship of the students and also for the industries, we can deepen the relationships of the sister city relationships.
I strongly wish the friendship of the two cities long for the last for the long time.
Mrs. Yoriko Kasai has been a part of Chino International Club since the beginning. She has dedicated many years to the program, and we are very grateful for her continued service and friendship.
I would like to, you know, express my sincere appreciation to all of you, not only the mayor and the city council people, but all the citizens who have been helping with the sister city relationship. Thanks to all the help of those people and the people in Chino too, we have been continuing this exchange programs for the students for as long as 27 years. And I am really happy as one of the persons who started this exchange program 27 years ago and the person who established the International Club 30 years ago. That's what I wanted to, you know, continue, and now this is the time that I'm going to, you know, ask someone younger to take it over. And later on, I think I will introduce that to you. But another thing I would like to thank you very much is that you have heard about the sister city joint concert, which was held on April 1st, on April Fool, in Japan, but it was not a fool, but it was a very big success. Thirty-one students from eight schools from Longmont came to Chino, and they worked with high school students in Chino and had a joint concert, which was a big success. And they impressed us so much that on that day, we had snow on April Fool. But the place, the big huge concert hall was full of people, citizens, and they all enjoyed that so much. And they expressed that they had really impressed by the sister city relationship and the students' performance, not only their skills, but the way they behaved and the way they made friends with Japanese students. It was very, very, how do you call that, touching, very much touching. So I was very happy. That was one of the, the only event, big event to celebrate our 30th anniversary of the International Club. So I thought that was the very happy event for all of us. Thank you so much for your help and sending such wonderful students and chaperones and directors to Chino. And I'm sure I would like to say many other things to thank you, but I know you have many issues to discuss tonight, so I'm going to finish it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to say that the city council and the city of Longmont are just really gracious to receive all the people from Chino and our sister cities, and we value our relationship.
Would you like to take a photo?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so Japan on this side, Mexico on that side.
Yeah, it is.
Mexico, Japan. You saw Japan, right? No, 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 you can face the council. You got all your Mexico? Okay, that's right. You got all your Mexico? Okay, that's right.
Mayor Coombs and City Council, we are also celebrating our twentieth year of an exchange with Ciudad Guzmán, Mexico. A celebration will be held in Mexico this summer, and we hope some of you will travel with us to join us in the celebration of our sister city relationship. It is my pleasure to introduce our students and chaperones who will represent our community in Mexico.
I'm Elektra Greer, and I work with the city of Longmont, and it is such a great honor and excitement and pleasure to be helping co-chaperon this trip to Mexico, so thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Bergen Ingvalsen. I'm going to Mexico. I go to Longmont High School, and I'm a sophomore. And I'd like to thank everyone involved in helping me have this opportunity to go to our sister city.
Hi, I'm Annie, and I go to Silver Creek High School, and I'm a sophomore. And I'm going to Mexico, and I just wanted to say thank you for letting me have this opportunity.
Hi, I'm David Murphy. I'm an eighth grader at Westview Middle School, and I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity and getting to travel.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth, and I'm going to Mexico as well. I go to Westview Middle School, and I'd like to thank you all so much for letting me go to and have this great opportunity.
I'm Anna Greer. I go to Westview Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade, and thank you for this wonderful opportunity.
I'm Emma Fike. I also go to Westview Middle School. I'm going to Mexico, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity.
I'm Eli Sargen, eighth grader at Westview Middle School, and I'd also like to thank you for this opportunity.
It is also my pleasure to introduce our delegation who will travel to Chino, Japan.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Skarsaga. I'm a Boulder County employee, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity. We're really excited. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Bandy. I'm a freshman at Silver Creek High School. Thank you for this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Taylor Caraballo. I'm a sophomore at Mead High School, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity.
I'm Saber Spence. I'm a sophomore at the, what is it, Front Range Community College. That's where I go to school. Yeah, cool. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you letting me go to Japan.
My name is Emmy Brunner, and I'm a freshman at Longmont High School, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
My name's Jade Zatella. I'm in tenth grade, and I'm homeschooled, and I want to thank you so much for this amazing opportunity. It really means a lot.
My name is Lauren Greenfield. I am so excited for this opportunity to go to Chino, Japan, with this wonderful group of kids and Vanessa, and when I'm not doing this, I work for the city.
Hello, my name is Joshua Paula Mars. I'm a sophomore at Niwa, and I just want to thank you guys for letting me go to Chino this time. I had a fun time in Mexico.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Will Murphy, and I'm a sophomore at Longmont High School, and I'm really looking forward to this experience. Thank you, guys.
Mayor Coombs and City Council, do you have any questions for our students? No? Do any of you have any advice for our travelers?
Because it's hot in both places. You know, for the kids that go into Chino, you'll have plenty of opportunities to, there's vending machines everywhere, so plenty of opportunities. When you're in, when you're in Mexico, your group, dress comfortably. But you're going to have a great time. Both cities are very, you know, I've been the both. But both cities are so welcoming. Everyone is so nice. Everyone wants to make sure that you're having the time of your life, and you will. So enjoy it, embrace it, and you'll have a great, fantastic time. And we actually want to hear how your trip went.
Enjoy. Thank you for your continued support.
Mayor Coombs, thanks. Actually, one thing came to mind, and it comes from last year. When you guys go, remember who you represent. Okay, you saw, you saw the Japanese delegation, how proud they are to represent their country, right, and their city. And you're seeing us respond to you and to them with dignity. If you're having a good time, don't have too much of a good time, okay? And if you're having a bad time, fake it and be respectful and polite of their culture. I guess that's my only two cents, and have a great time. It's a great experience.
Thank you.
Okay, now I've got a proclamation designating the week of April 30th through May 6th as Longmont Small Business Week in Longmont, Colorado. And Jessica Erickson and the staff of Longmont EDP are here to accept the proclamation. Whereas America's progress and economic prosperity have been driven by pioneers who think big, take risk, and work hard. From the storefront shops on Main Street to the high-tech businesses that keep the U.S. on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas Colorado's small business employs forty-eight point six percent of the private workforce, and firms with fewer than a hundred employees have the largest share of small businesses, small business employment in Colorado. And whereas because of this community's twenty-nine, this country's twenty-nine point six million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in the U.S. without discussing ways to support our small businesses. And whereas the National Small Business Week has been proclaimed yearly since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration. And whereas Longmont supports and joins in this national effort to recognize and support our local small businesses to grow and create jobs. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of April 30th through May 6th, twenty-seventeenth, as Longmont Small Business Week in Longmont, and encourage all of our citizens to shop our small businesses in our community.
Mayor Coombs, City Council, thank you. I'm Wendy Nafseger. I'm vice president of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, and I'll let Janine introduce herself.
Good evening. I'm Janine Lettingham. I'm the director of local business and startup community development for the Longmont Economic Development Partnership.
So we'll keep this short. On behalf of the partnership and the entire community, we want to say thank you for proclaiming this week a Small Business Week. I wanted to just quote, there are over two-hundred-and-twenty primary industry small businesses in Longmont representing over eight thousand jobs and five million square feet, and that's just the primary jobs. That doesn't count all of our local businesses that are here as well. So we want to say thank you. And as part of the photo op, I wondered if it'd be okay if I invite anyone in the audience that is a small business owner here in Longmont to please come up and be in the photo with us.
We also have members of the Local Business Advisory Committee that are here, so if you could come up and join us as well. And we want to ask everyone to join us in a celebration tomorrow evening at Carol K. Gallery on Main Street. So anybody's welcome, four to six P.M.
Here we go, guys. One, two, three. Thank you. Okay, next we have a proclamation. Proclamation designating the week of May 8th through the 14th, twenty-seventeenth, as Longmont Symphony Week in Longmont, Colorado. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now. Whereas Longmont Symphony Orchestra has provided world-class musical opportunities to citizens of Longmont for fifty years through classical concerts, nutcracker performance, school concerts, Concert for Seniors, July Fourth Celebration, and mentorships to student musicians in the schools of Longmont. Whereas without our arts organization, our communities would lack so much beauty, so much hope, and so much opportunity for engagement and connecting diverse people and classes. Whereas the Longmont Symphony Orchestra's mission is to foster and promote the appreciation and understanding of symphonic music through performance and educational programs. And whereas the Longmont Symphony is choosing a new music director in twenty-seventeen to lead the orchestra, enabling the orchestra to expand its reaches and influence in Longmont and to northern Front Range, Colorado, for another fifty years. Now therefore, I Dennis Al Combs, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th through 14th, twenty-seventeenth, as Longmont Symphony Week in Longmont, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the efforts of the Longmont Symphony Orchestra. So would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to introduce Carolyn Minelli, past president, Pauline Soderheim, vice president, I am Bob Pilkey, current board president. We have, like you say, we just celebrated our fiftieth year here in Longmont. We look forward to celebrating another fifty years here in Longmont. Our new music director will be announced at our concert on May 13th. So you can buy tickets at longmontsymphony.org. We'd love to have you come out and listen to our music and be introduced to our new music director. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, we had the wrong proclamation printed out, but for the photo, we'll thank it.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is presentation regarding the progress for phased Northwest Rail service to Longmont, and Sean Lewis will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to give a brief presentation tonight on some progress that you all started more than a year ago when you met with RTD staff to talk about how we can progress in our efforts to bring Northwest Rail to Longmont. This is a map on the screen of the original Northwest Rail alignment with the original stations that have not, have been altered a little bit since then. When we talk about phased rail, we'll be dropping the gun barrel station and adding a station at eighty-eighth. But otherwise, even in the phased system, it's pretty close to the original. So as you may recall, the ultimate service plan for Longmont, according to the NAMS report, that was the Northwest Area Mobility Study, call for commuter rail. It's always been planned for commuter rail, as will the phased approach. Fifty-five trains per day was the number of trains that were originally called for. That would require double tracking so that the trains could go both directions. It would require ten new stations, and the last cost estimate that we got in twenty-fourteen was one point two to one point four billion, based on, depending on the number of ultimate stations that would be built. So I'm not here, obviously, to make excuses for RTD nor defend them, but I do want to give you some feedback and, as well as the public, on some of the challenges that we do know have faced RTD as we've moved forward. Harold and I and Phil Greenwald got a chance to meet with the CFO of RTD and some of her staff and really look at some of the numbers, and it's very clear when you look at the revenues and projections that the recession has had a long-term impact on the overall revenues in the Fast Track account. In addition, the ability to operate on Northwest Rail, the cost to operate on Northwest Rail has gone up pretty dramatically since the original plan was done. That's mainly for a few reasons. The oil industry, for one, when we had the oil boom, we were moving large amounts of crude oil from the Bakken Shale up in North Dakota. You also had frac sand going the other direction that really drove up the price of, and the value to be in itself of that rail line, making it more difficult, as well as increased coal shipments coming out of Wyoming. Third, as with all construction costs, in many cases, those have outpaced the rate of inflation. And lastly, RTD has, because of their expenditures in other areas of the district, has maximized their ability to bond additional projects because of Tabor rules that are really limiting their ability to look beyond about the next twenty years for large capital projects. So before Phil Greenwald, our transportation planner, goes over the actual scenarios that we're asking RTD to look at, this is just kind of a summary of what a phased approach would look like. I should mention that once you all suggested this and started the whole region down the path of this conversation to have phased rail, we were given two, after that, we were given two examples from RTD. The most significant example of where this has worked in other parts of the country is Dallas-Fort Worth, where the Trinity Rail Express between Dallas and Fort Worth started just with one or two trains per day, and as demand grew, they were able to expand service. And so RTD really cites that as one of the main examples that they give on how this could work. But the phased approach would be three to four trains per day, depending on the scenarios that Phil will go over. There would be able to, we would be able to use the existing track without having to double-track. We would also have five new stations instead of the ten that were originally called for. There are three options, and there is a community and RTD conversation that's really right now at the staff level. We have had some folks from RTD board. Councilman Repet has joined us for some of those meetings as well. But really, then the staff between RTD and the communities of Northwest Rail have had some great conversations as we've kicked off this approach, and I'll let Phil run over these rail options.
All right, good evening. Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city. As Sean mentioned, we do have the three options that we've gone over. These kind of make the most sense or the most reasonable, and what we're really trying to do with the three options is really limit that time that we're on the Burlington Northern track, because we're trying to use existing rail track that's out there today and really trying to tighten up that window of operations for commuter rail so that Burlington Northern can use it for freight movement, but also not charge us as much. So that's, that's another piece of this. So the option number one is the service plan is really talking about those three trains into Denver in the morning and three trains coming back in the evening. It can also be reversed if we need to, depending on how that works out. The limitation with this plan is that once you, that a lot of the drive in those corridors is moving to Boulder. So Longmont's trying to get to Boulder, so the three trips in in the morning work well for Longmont to Boulder operations, but they don't work as well from, say, Westminster, Broomfield, and Louisville to Boulder. So those are some issues that we've heard with this option. Operating cost for that one's about twelve to fifteen million dollars, just for the operational cost to RTD. Option number two, service plan includes basically four trips because it's a, it's a shorter distance between Longmont to Boulder, as it is from Boulder to Union Station. So we can do about four trips in between downtown Longmont and Boulder. can do about four trips in between downtown Longmont and Boulder, and just in about the same amount of time do two trips between Union Station and Boulder. So, there's a meetup issue in Boulder. What we're trying to do is stagger the trains, so there's not one in the station at the same time, but that also causes some issues with transfers. So, RTD is telling us, well, you might have to do some passing track in Boulder for this. So, it might, there's a little bit extra that you'll see in the operating estimate. Again, those can go, those are kind of bi-directional service. They could either start in Boulder and go up to Longmont or either direction. It's kind of up to the way they're operating, but it is a 12 to 16 million dollar effort for that one. Option three is the kind of running in third place right now as an option for the group, just because this includes two trains southbound and one train northbound in the morning, and then doing the opposite move in the evening. Again, that can be moved around as well, that can be shifted in different directions. But right now, when we talk about the two trains southbound and one train northbound in the morning, that's really taking a lot of time on the corridors, so it really closes down the window of operations for Burlington Northern, becomes a little onerous as far as taking time off that corridor for Burlington Northern, and we're really trying to cut those costs. That being said, it is an 11 to 14 million dollar option, but then again, we don't have the operating costs from Burlington Northern yet to add to these operations costs for RTD. So, those are a couple of things that we're going over as far as the three options.
I should mention that among many other talents, Phil Greenwald is really talented at putting together, he actually designed these scenarios for the rest of the transportation staff in the region that RTD has been responding to. So, thank you, Phil, for your leadership in that. So, last slide here, next steps. We want to, again, finalize the scale-back design needs, so right now, the other communities are meeting with RTD to talk about what they can live without in their station designs, because the more things that they can reduce, the more ways that they can reduce the cost of those stations, the lower the overall capital cost will be. The numbers that Phil gave you are simply operational. That does not include the capital cost. And so, the next thing would be to finalize construction and operating cost estimates. Again, we hope to, within the next few months, be doing that with RTD. We think we're getting pretty close. And then start discussing options with BNSF. When I talked about the cost of operating on the BNSF, I think you all understand this, but for the public, we have to pay BNSF, RTD does, to utilize the BNSF-owned railway. And so, those costs, as I mentioned, have escalated greatly, they're very high, but as Phil mentioned, we're trying to design this to really limit the time that we're on their track to about four hours a day, a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the evening, so that we don't have to pay as much to BNSF to operate. And next, we have to ensure the designs are in local land use plans. So, as we look at our own comprehensive plan, Envision Longmont, as we look at our first and main station plan, we want other cities to do the same thing, to make sure that they are planning for that station work and reserving right-of-way, you know, buying up land as needed, so it's less costly when we finally build. And lastly, just start working to identify funding options. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Doesn't look like anybody's got any questions. All right, so now we'll move to item 9A.
Mayor Coombs, item 9A is ordinance 2016-26, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Creekside Second Filing Replat B rezoning from business light industrial to residential high density, generally located at the southeast corner of Pike Road and Hoover Street. This is a continuation of an item from last week's agenda, and Erin Fostick will start us off.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of City Council. I'm Erin Fostick with the Planning and Development Services Department. We did our presentation on this item last week, and you'll recall, staff made their presentation, the applicant did a presentation, and we did hold a public hearing, but because of the lateness in the evening, council made a motion that was approved to continue this item to today. And so, I'm not planning on doing a formal presentation. I think what we had talked about with Eugene was having you all open the public hearing. Certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions prior to that. I'm happy to go through a presentation again if you need it, but hold the public hearing, have any discussion by council. I think the applicant would like a chance to make a few remarks, and then we'll go from there. So, with that, I'd take any questions.
No questions, so let's go ahead, and I'm going to open the public hearing on this item, and the first person is Camille Accountis.
Good evening. I am Camille Accountis, and I live at 2027 Creekside Drive in Longmont. You have a recommendation to change the zoning of a parcel land at the corner of Hoover and Pike from business light industrial to high-density multifamily. The proposed development will provide approximately 250 apartment units and about 100 elder care units. Part of the justification for this zoning change was the development's adherence to the principles of the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan. I understand and support the purpose behind Envision Longmont. One of the guiding principles is to create and maintain livable centers, corridors, and neighborhoods. I submit to you that in its present form, this zoning change does not support this principle. The Planning and Zoning Commission only considered the traffic benchmark at the corner of Pike and Hoover. That committee neglected to consider other factors like livability and recreation in the neighborhoods surrounding this proposed development, as well as that which will exist in the development itself. No consideration was made to elevate the priority of existing benchmarks and requirements necessary to ensure that the guiding principle number one is met. The need for transitional incremental change was not even considered. You cannot throw hot water on a frozen window and expect it not to break. Right now Pike Road is the overflow road for Ken Pratt Boulevard. It is slated for capacity improvements in 10 to 20 years, despite the burdensome traffic conditions today. Left-hand Creek Park in the Creekside neighborhood is being loved to death. Adding the residence of approximately 350 more housing units will create an enormous strain on this one and only neighborhood park that is south of Pike Road. I request that you consider one of two actions. The first consideration, reject the zoning change and send it back to the P&amp;Z for retooling for a less drastic change can be submitted and considered. Otherwise, if you are determined to make this abrupt change to this neighborhood community, then do so with some added requirements. Require that traffic capacity improvements at the intersections and through the Pike Corridor are elevated to the highest priority, so they can be alleviated in the near term, not the long term. Also, I request that you consider the overuse of that park and consider that it is alleviated by canceling the contracts with all organized sports groups.
We only get three minutes to speak on each.
Okay. So that the park can absorb the additional pressure that will result from the overflow. Thank you.
Sarah Napier.
Mr. Mayor, and elected officials of our City Council, I thank you very much for letting me speak here tonight. My name is Sarah Napier, and I live at 1972 Amethyst Drive here in Longmont. Our house backs onto Pike Road. We built our home eight years ago. We knew there would be some traffic on Pike Road. However, in the past few years, traffic has increased immensely. We have so much traffic now that I can no longer make a left-hand turn out of our development onto Pike Road. I have to drive through the neighborhood to sunset, so I can make my left at that traffic light. And on occasion, and happening more and more frequently, I need to sit through that light for two cycles in order to make my left-hand turn. I'm especially concerned about the congestion on Pike Road. Traffic increases every day, even without this new proposed development. Every day for the past three years, I've taken my son to Altona Middle School, and I have seen the excessive building going on on Clover Basin. This has led to increased traffic, reckless driving, accidents, and most recently, a child being hit while crossing in a crosswalk on his way to school. I think we can use this as an example of what not to do on Pike. I'm also very concerned as to how the residents of this new proposed development will make their left-hand turns onto Pike Road. I haven't heard of any mention of if a traffic light is going in at this new road, which will be the main entrance and exit to the development of Pike. I don't understand how the residents are safely going to make a left-hand turn onto Pike. We don't want an increase in reckless drivers on Pike, especially so close to so many schools in this area. I really wish I would have been able to come here last week, because I would have encouraged each and every one of you to drive on Pike Road at 8:00 in the morning to see the traffic for yourselves. This is our neighborhood, and this is what we live every day, and we do not want more traffic, which may put us and could put our kids in danger. Thank you for listening.
Next is Rebecca Stadler.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Stadler, and I'm here to, I want to say that I agree with everything that has been previously spoken about tonight, so I won't rehash that here, but I'm primarily speaking in opposition to the rezoning of the Creekside development. And my opposition is based on the height, the density, and the traffic issues that come along with rezoning. Generally, Longmont is a low-rise city. I was looking around at some of our buildings that we have here and noted that some of our tallest buildings are Longmont United Hospital, which is five stories tall, UC Health, Longs Peak Hospital, which is going in, and from my sources on the internet says that that's going at 50 feet tall, with other features of the hospital being at 80 feet tall, and various hotels and banks that are around the town. According to the documents in the planning, on the planning documents, it says that the proposed zoning and development would allow buildings up to 65 feet tall and buildings up to three or four stories, if affordable housing is included, that those limits could go up. Balfour in the documents state that their development would be three to four stories tall, and the McWhinney Apartments up to 65 feet tall. So, we're saying right here that these apartments could be bigger than our Longmont United Hospital and UC Health Hospital. This is thrown into our neighborhood. I want to go ahead and cite the Envision Longmont Plan, which I think is a really great plan. This little parcel here is considered mixed-use employment, and I'll quote, "Development of budding lower-intensity established residential neighborhoods should provide transition en masse in height," end quote. I believe that any reasonable person would look at this and say that something as tall as Longmont United Hospital or UC Health does not fit the standards set forth by Envision Longmont. I'd also like to express my concerns about traffic. I echo everything that was said previously here, mainly concerning the railroad tracks on Hoover and the bottlenecks that occur right there. My husband was just involved in an accident there. He was rear-ended at a red light by a distracted driver. The traffic at Pike and Miller, right by Front Range Community College, where people are turning left to get into Front Range, and the pedestrian crossings of people going to Sunset Middle School, Oscar Blues Brewery, Flagstaff Academy, et cetera. And I would like to remind the council that we are voters. We all elected you to represent us and not the developers, so we encourage you to listen to the concerns that we have, and please make appropriate decisions as needed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chuck, no clapping. Chuck Gravel, yes. And he'll be followed by Ann Hunter.
Chuck Gravel, 2040 Sumpview Drive, Creekside neighborhood. Thanks for giving us the time to express our concerns. A number of us couldn't be here last week because of the items going on. Forgive me also if I read a little bit, I've got a lot to go through. I believe you need to spend more time assessing the impact of this zoning change before committing to it. One concern that we all have is having a sea of apartments in both of the proposed lots, the one being proposed, this one, and the adjacent one next to it. If this one is rezoned, can you have any guarantees that the next one won't be rezoned that way as well? Seems like you're almost setting a precedent. Also, what if the senior living center decides not to build? Can you guarantee that once rezoned, it too doesn't become another set of apartments doubling that size and all the traffic that's been mentioned? One of the Planning and Zoning Commission members said that we could possibly have this as a mixed-use residential instead, which would still give us oversight. It was discussed with the client, and they just basically said, "Well, this is what we chose the first time, but we're okay with whatever, so long as we can do our development." So, I'm also, you know, asking you to please consider that as an option. Number two, school children. Originally, part of Water Song was supposed to be an elementary school. About 10 years ago or so, it was rezoned and became mixed or residential. So, we have no schools south of Pike at all. And now, a bunch of kids have moved into the neighborhood. It used to be all high school kids. So, now all the elementary and middle school kids, all of them, must cross Pike to go to the schools on the other side. So, the developer also mentioned there's a tunnel at the creek that could be used for pedestrians. If you look on a Google map, or any other map like that, satellite map, you'll see that tunnel goes straight up the creek. There is no sidewalk going east at all. There is room for a bike path, but there's no sidewalk going east at all, so it is basically useless to anyone going to Flagstaff. As mentioned, the railroad crossing will probably be need updating. I'm guessing that you're going to need to budget for at least two more lights on Pike, potentially Plateau and Hoover, and a pedestrian crossing over at Left Hand to get people in and out of that neighborhood. No one can turn left, whether from the north going left or from the south going left onto Pike, you're going to need some mitigation there. Also, the 27 cars being added per trip, that's over what would be there if it was filled in right now, not over an empty lot. It's hundreds per hour on the peak. So, please consider these options. Please maybe delay your decision, get more information, or talk to the Planning and Zoning about that other proposal that was mentioned, which is mixed-use, where you have more oversight. Thank you very much.
Ann Hunter.
My name is Ann Hunter. I live at 430 Emery. I want to support what people said last week about the value of this particular parcel in terms of the soils agriculturally, and also in terms of the Greenway, the Flood Plain, and the Wildlife Corridor, all of which are going to be constricted now. And what I'm going to say is a little bit general, but it has to do with the whole way that Envision Longmont is being implemented also. So, here's my proposal. Instead of destroying valuable agricultural property and constricting the Greenway and Flood Plain with more hard surfaces and buildings, why not build housing in the virtually empty areas in and next to the Village at the Peaks Mall? Why not turn it into a real village inhabited by people who would shop in the mall and give those stores some additional business while staying well out of the Flood Plains and leaving agricultural land in open space green? The areas around the old Walmart and Hobby Lobby are close to bus lines, parking, and major roads. People who lived, worked, and shopped there would use cars significantly less than if they lived at Pike and Hoover. Also, keep in mind that a continuing care community such as being proposed there is not just a residence, it's also a workplace. It's staffed by care providers who work multiple shifts, and there will be traffic at all times of day. As people pointed out last week, the soils on the Pike and Hoover parcel are especially valuable, and the Flood Plain, the Greenway, and the Wildlife Corridor are too. In reality, sites like this are not undeveloped. Their soils and ecological systems took millennia to develop, and once they're gone, they can't be replaced.
Rhonda Pardo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to, I'm Rhonda Pardo. I live at 1971 Emerald Drive. I'm here to oppose the rezoning of the Creekside area to residential high density, and I agree with the many opposing points already stated. agree with the many opposing points already stated. They've stated some of mine already. I live near Left Hand Park. It's difficult for me to get out at Ridgeview Drive to Pike already, especially during rush hour. The possible solution to maybe add another traffic light on Pike due to this high-density residential being built would cause even more backup at Main and Hoover on Pike, worse than it already is now. We already were backed up even just coming to this meeting. The city already lowered the speed limit from 45 to 40 miles per hour on Pike, and cars are still speeding through. Not myself. More cars speeding through increase the hazard to the schoolchildren in that area, and I agree. Flags, I know Flagstaff students, Sunset students, Indian Peak students that do cross that road at Sunset and Pike. If there's a solution of maybe expanding Pike to more lanes, that's just going to cause even worse traffic, possibilities of accidents, more hazards to the schoolchildren. One of my biggest concerns will be the greater need for more lanes and turn lanes at Pike and making Pike a major thoroughfare like Ken Pratt. I mean, there's already some, you know, larger trucks, delivery trucks, semis coming through. So I feel the plans for the corner of Pike and Hoover should stay with the original plan to develop business-light industrial to match that surrounding area already of the businesses and Front Range. We had problems with emergency evacuations in that time during the flooding. It's, you know, my parents live right south of Pike, and they were asked to evacuate, and it was just a mess. So any other extra-high, you know, residential is just going to be very bad. So for these reasons and others, I oppose the rezoning. Thank you.
Jeff Sigley?
I live at 2020 Diamond Drive in Longmont. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I echo again what many of my fellow citizens have said. I just want to add my own. I do believe that the landowner does have a right to develop, but I think it needs to be done properly and responsibly, and I appreciate the effort that's been put into that. But I don't know that it's been done in a reasonable, balanced way. I think it needs to fit the makeup of the area and not be another large living complex like we already have around town. There's many already around town. As we drive around, we can see that, and we're all impacted with the traffic. And I recognize what some of my fellow residents said about trying to snake our way back through the neighborhood just to be able to get out of our neighborhood. Pike Road was supposed to be a neighborhood feeder, and now it's a major commuter lane through or route through from 287 through Hoover, and people trying to get probably all the way from, you know, outerlying areas to Boulder. Traffic's already bad. I know when I come my back routes, even some of the turn lanes are already backing up into the main lanes of people trying to get through. So any mitigation that's planned may alleviate what's currently going on, but I don't think would address what's planned. I think whatever development is ultimately decided on should fit what is, what's already going on in that area, more of a single-level light-business-type development, not packed in like some of the new areas are being done around town. I saw the response to some of the concerned citizens with the emails and so forth. It was a little bit disappointing, actually. It said traffic wouldn't be a concern based on some of the mitigation that would be done around some of those localized areas and intersections, but I still believe there's going to be a large impact to the area in general. I mean, anybody that is driving around that area, the diagonal area, South Hoover, Pike, that whole area is already a mess. And now, we're going to take all these additional people and dump them into the area. It's going to impact the greenways and all that traffic. They also said that property values wouldn't decrease, and I say that common sense would not agree with that, with all the increased traffic noise and the greenway impact. I believe we need balanced growth and responsible growth in Longmont, not more high-density housing that we're already seeing plenty of in the area. I feel our community is suffering. I've lived here over 30 years, and I love it here, and I want to keep enjoying it. I'm sure you do as well. So I think we need balance and common sense, and I thank you for that. Thank you for your time.
Ursula Bunding?
My name is Ursula Bunding, and first of all, I wanted to thank the council for serving the city of Longmont. And also, I wanted to thank all my neighbors for coming here, for doing the homework, doing the research, so your job is easier. I would like to tell you that, just like everybody that has spoken here and everybody that I spoke to directly is opposing this project. There are many reasons for that. One reason that it's very important to me is I have two young children. One of them goes to Nywhat Elementary and the other one to Sunset Middle School. Going to school is very difficult because of the traffic. Sunset Middle School right now doesn't have a bus, so many kids have to walk there. I've heard from Erin that it's been considered having a bus to our neighborhoods if this project is approved. This is not why we leave our neighborhood to have the bus driving two miles. We live there so the kids can walk to school safely. And another concern that I have is, there is no question if the accident, serious accident going to happen. The question is, when is going to happen? Is the city prepared for a liability, and are the taxpayers, and should the taxpayers be responsible for that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ellen Ren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. When you get down on the list, the topics are repetitive. I'd like to also-
Please just state your name and address for the-
Oh, sorry. Alan Ren, 2202 Barnswallow Drive. I live directly south of this proposed development, and I wanted to come before you to state my family and my neighbor's strong opposition to this rezoning. I don't believe that all the aspects have been completely considered, and I'm reiterating the main points that others have. One point that hasn't been brought up is relative to the elevation change. This property to be redeveloped has a natural elevation gain between 20 and 30 feet higher than our house. So if you put a two- to three-story building over there, we're going to see it over the trees as a, for, well, two or three stories above the tree line from our house. This is changing the dynamic of a suburban entry into Longmont neighborhood to more of the middle of the city, and that's out of character with the original zoning plan. I also want to reiterate to you to think and investigate clearly the traffic studies. I don't believe that the traffic patterns of people making left-hand turns on a very high-volume roadway are considered, in that you will start getting requests for additional stoplights on Pike in order to get out of a high-density development. In order to be safe and provide for that, if you slow down traffic again, we're going to be backed up all the way from 95th Street over to Sunset. The natural progression is to add additional lanes, and now, our whole area, our subdivision, the area south of Pike becomes separated from Longmont by a major thoroughfare with a lot of traffic, as been brought up before. The last point is the actual development plans. They are stretching the development very close to the creek itself, which is, I don't believe is within the theme of our neighborhood to keep that as a green area. So please consider denying this zoning change. Thank you.
Michelle Kolokowski. I probably butchered it, but you can correct me.
Thank you. That was a great pronunciation. I was here last week. My name's Michelle Kolokowski. I live at 2138 Riverwalk Lane, and I'll keep my comments brief. I was one of the people that stayed late to make comments last week, and I was unable to finish. So I live directly across the creek from the proposed rezoning area. I've lived there for 18 years. Left Hand Creek and its greenway need your protection as you consider this rezoning. The creek and the adjacent riparian area to the north is a beautiful wildlife corridor, and the city of Longmont invested money, including taxpayer money, to create a terrific greenway, bike, and pedestrian path. The Left Hand Creek Greenway is in the floodplain, and it was rebuilt in 2013. The nature along the creek and the mountain views are spectacular for all the city residents and our visitors to enjoy. I ask City Council to think about the wisdom of this rezoning proposal for high-density residential. I ask you to consider the impacts on the Left Hand Creek environment, the animals, the obliteration of the mountain views. The developers are proposing a road adjacent to the creek, multiple buildings adjacent to the creek, not to mention this, not to mention the surface area parking, the noise, the traffic, the pollution, the cars, the people that all the folks have already mentioned. With all due respect to the city planning staff, Erin Fosdick and the developers who have worked very hard to bring this proposal to council, I respectfully disagree with the developers' report that Block 1 and 2 have no animal and vegetation that need protection. There's a significant amount of wildlife that live and hunt there. I watch animals eat and hunt there every day. Last week, my neighbor who owns Olin Farms spoke about Left Hand Creek's nutrient-rich soil that is incredibly unique. I ask you to consider if high-density residential zoning is the best use of this unique Longmont property. I say no, and ask you to vote against the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that didn't speak last week at the public hearing that would like to speak tonight? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So is the applicant then going to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. My name is Pam Hora. I'm a senior planner at Tetra Tech. We're located at 1900 South Sunset Street here in Longmont. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again tonight. As you know, I gave a very detailed presentation last week at the hearing, and as part of that presentation, I stepped through how we have responded to all the review criteria associated with the rezoning application and met those criteria. And I also went through and explained how we have responded to many of the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors. So in the interest of time, I wasn't going to go back through that presentation with you tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about that, or if you'd like to see any of that information. I know Erin says that we have that and could pull it back up if we needed to. And I know also there was some information shared tonight from the neighbors that wasn't accurate, so if you have any questions related to that, I can help answer some of those questions. We do recognize that the neighbors have concerns about this project. Many of those concerns really are related to the actual development of the property. They have enjoyed seeing this property as an undeveloped vacant parcel in their neighborhood for many years, as long as they have lived there, and so it's hard to see change. And there's that fear of change and how that change could impact their lives and where they live, and that is a real fear. This application is not about whether or not this property is going to develop, it's about the changing of the zoning on the property to allow for high-density residential development to be built in order for us to implement the Envision Longmont Plan, which you adopted last year. There is a need for high-density residential housing options in this part of Longmont. The location is an optimal area for high-density residential. The city's utility infrastructure is set up to be able to handle and accommodate this type of development. The developer has stepped up to the plate and is going above and beyond what is required when it comes to making improvements to the street to be able to both accommodate the development as well as address some of the existing problems with transportation in the area. Both city staff and the Planning Commission support the application, and so tonight, we just respectfully request that you approve this application. Ron Bovard, the applicant, is here with me tonight, and we also did ask representatives from McWhinney and Balfour to join us so that if you have any questions for them, that they could be available to help answer those questions. So we just wanted to thank you for your time, and once again, if you have any questions that we need to answer and help clarify things, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Well, I have one question for, I think it's for our city staff. Is there any way we can connect a sidewalk to that tunnel that goes underneath? Is that in the plans or?
I can help answer that as well.
Okay, go ahead.
We are actually, as part of this project, the developer agreed that they would construct a pedestrian connection on the south side of, at the intersection of Pike and Hoover. On the south side of Hoover, right now, there's not any kind of pedestrian crossing there, so they're going to stripe it and then build the missing sidewalk on the other side of Hoover, on the west side of Hoover, so it'll be able to go up and connect to the pedestrian underpass. So that's one of those above-and-beyond things that they agreed to do to help with that connection.
Councilmember Beck?
Do they want to answer that question before I go on?
They're referring to the underpass under Pike? Yeah, that one we have not discussed with staff.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Members of Council, Nick Wall from the Director of Engineering Services with the city of Longmont. That is a missing section of sidewalk that we have that is not currently in our work program. We are working on missing sections in other areas. If that became a priority, that is something that could be looked at. We have the right-of-way there. It's something that's not currently on the list, but as we approach and look at our CIP this coming year, that's something that could be considered.
Councilmember Christensen?
Two questions. First of all, I, that I wanted to ask this lady. I wanted to know what, oh, thank you, what things you felt were mistaken about what people said, but also, I believe that a lot of people were concerned about people getting to Sunset Middle School at Pike and Sunset. And that's, any of us who've driven that, and we've all driven that, that's a pretty difficult intersection, and it, very difficult for kids to get across, even junior-high kids, I think. But please do tell us what you think is mistaken.
One of the main things had to do with the heights. We talked about last week that they have agreed to the existing height that is allowed per the code, so that sets it at 40 feet in the R3 zone. Currently, in the BLI zone, they're allowed to have a building that's 45 feet tall, so this is actually going to be shorter than what they're allowed in the BLI zone. So at one point, they had mentioned the possibility because of the Envision Longmont Plan, talking about affordable, allowing them to go taller, but because of the concerns that they heard from the neighbors, they agreed to stay with the 40-foot height limitation.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I got a couple of thoughts, but let me start with some questions. First of all, remind us, city staff, about the traffic study. If I remember correctly, if it remains and is built out business-light industrial, and then it is changed to high-density, how many tra, what's the increase in traffic? 27 trips a day, something like that?
Sure. Councilmember Bagley. Tyler Stamen, Public Works Civil Engineer. So the change from BLI to the proposed R3 would add an increase of, daily increase in trips is about just under 800. The peak hour trips, the increase in AM peak hour trips is 27, the increase in PM peak hour trips is 47.
Okay. And then, the next question, and this is as we start to start, so everybody- Okay. And then, the next question, and this is as we start to start, so everybody understands, what kind of stores could go in as business-like industrial? Isn't it true that if we approved pot shops, it could be pot shops? Or adult bookstores? Or welding shops? There's chuckles, but that's what's permitted in business-like industrial?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, obviously, we don't have any rules for pot shops at this point.
Right.
The direction that we received from council was to look at commercial and industrial areas, so conceivably, that would be an area we would look at, but that's a lot of this.
What about adult bookstores, welding shops?
There are a number of kind of lighter industrial uses. I can pull up the code if you give me a second, and we can go through the list of uses, but there are a number of uses, more office-type uses, research and development, lighter industrial manufacturing, some indoor and screened outdoor storage. You know, it's a variety of lighter industrial type of uses.
Okay.
And I can pull up the code.
So, I guess the-
Phil has something to add.
Right. And then, I guess the, I guess the, so those are, those are my comments towards the neighbors, and they're always the same comments that come to my mind when somebody comes and the neighbors say, "Don't build here." However, I do have some concerns about the development, and that is, first of all, I guess my response is, Envision Longmont is very different than a use-by-right, meaning Envision Longmont is a guiding principle that is to, that we established as a city council to direct staff and kind of set out the vision for the city. At no point did I at least intend it to establish, "Oh, because of Envision Longmont, we're going to go ahead and change zoning because of Envision Longmont." I guess the, so the other question ahead is, there's no variance, right, being requested if we do change the zoning to high-density residential?
Councilmember Bagley, the process, so if a rezoning of this property is approved, an applicant still needs to come through and go through the site plan process before a development can be approved. At this point, we don't have an application for a site plan. It's our understanding that there aren't any variances that would be requested, but obviously, until we see an application, we wouldn't be able to see that. You don't typically have a variance at a rezoning stage. That would typically be with a site plan, and it's our understanding that the applicant would intend to construct their development within what would be allowed in the R3.
And though, I guess my biggest concern with everything, as I'm processing everything, and the question that comes to my mind over and over again, what happened at the neighborhood meetings? Meaning, was there a neighborhood meeting? I'm hearing a lot of concerns, like the neighbors have concerns, but usually, we hear, "Well, we had a neighborhood meeting, and we talked, and these were the concerns, but the neighbors came back, and they said they had more concerns, so we decided to change it. We promised this, we promised that." I mean, just from the, my feeling is, there's been no communication between the developer and the residents. Am I wrong?
I would, I would say you're wrong. We-
It's okay. I'm never wrong, so it's okay.
You know, I think our code is very specific about what is required. Per our code, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting last late summer, early fall. I think approximately 30 or so people attended that meeting. They went through, talked about the proposal. Many of the concerns that were discussed today are the concerns that were discussed at that time, specifically, kind of a rezoning and change of use in generals, building height and impacts to views, impacts associated with the creek, and concerns about flooding. Traffic, obviously, was a big concern at that point, so I think the concerns have been those concerns. The applicant has met with several property owners. I have met with several property owners, and we've responded to emails. I know also, the public hearing for Planning Commission was noticed, and we had 22 people speak at that hearing. This is our second public hearing at council, and we've had, so the applicant was required to mail notice for the neighborhood meeting, a notice of application when we receive the application, a notice of public hearing for Planning Commission, and then a notice of public hearing for council. So, we've done all that. The applicant has done all that, and we have met with and responded to inquiries as they've come in. I would say the concerns that are brought up are the same concerns generally that we've talked about, that we talked about at the neighborhood meeting.
And I guess my concern is that the whole point, I mean, I appreciate the code and the law that says you have to reach out and give notice, et cetera, but I guess my opinion is that the whole point of that is to engage the neighbors and find solutions to the concerns. So, I don't have any problem, obviously, building over the, over the pushback of citizens. I live on Sundance. The Sundance neighborhood, they hate me because I approved the Providence Development up north, but that was because there was a use-by-right, meaning it was approved back in 2004, and there wasn't a darn thing council could do. There's a woman I respect very much, Susan Howell. She loves cats. We used to go to the auction together, and man, she does not like me ever since I approved the Southwest Apartments. And again, that was because of, you know, use-by-right, and so, right, and I've also changed zoning before because I felt that we needed more high-density residential. We're currently in the pipeline, 2,000-plus apartment units, and although I respect, yeah, we can build up to X feet, we still haven't approved the zoning change, so the developer doesn't have that right currently. And so, I guess my concern is, I'm leaning against it at the moment because I'm concerned that the developer and the neighbors have not talked enough to basically say, "These are our concerns, and we would like you to address those concerns." It's not enough, I think, to just show up and say, "We've sent out notice. We want high-density residential, and we're pushing it through." So, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now, unless you can change my mind. I mean, that's just one of seven, though.
If I could just mention, just so there's no confusion, the property is currently zoned business-like industrial, which allows buildings to be built up to 45 feet, so I just want to make sure that that's understood today.
Not for adults.
Correct. That is not a, the only way that apartments could be built in business-like industrial is if it was affordable housing.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's my understanding when you've changed the zoning to R, excuse me, I'm trying not to use my voice, to R3, that there's a primary use and a secondary use, and it's the secondary use that is the high-density residential. Is that correct?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, there's kind of two separate things. One is land use, one is zoning, and so, you'll recall, we talked a lot about land use during the Envision Longmont process, and within the mixed-use employment area, which this area was changed to during Envision, contemplating that a lot of the areas that we identified changing would be rezoned, that is, an implementation strategy for Envision. We identified primary and secondary land uses, and so, in the mixed-use employment zone, high-density residential, live-work is a secondary use.
Right.
And so, as we think about this mixed-use employment center, which stretches kind of from the creek all the way over to the tracks, so past Hoover, we would anticipate that the primary uses would not be residential, the residential portion would be a secondary piece of that whole center.
Okay.
And with zoning, there are principal uses within a zoning district. High-density residential and group care, assisted living-type facilities are permitted principal uses.
Okay. Thank you. So, I would like clarification on the senior living. Is that assisted living or independent?
Good evening. Hunter McLeod. I'm with Balfour Senior Living, 1331 Heckla Drive. We are proposing to do a continuum of care, so it would be independent living with limited services, assisted living, and then secured memory care.
Okay, so it'll be a transitional type of care?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I have a traffic question, and I needed to know what that care center was going to be, because when I look at the numbers, and Tyler, thank you for talking to me earlier today. My question is, when you say it'll be 27 cars and 45 trips above what was estimated, is that estimate before or after the, is it what's on the road now, or is it after the development?
Councilmember Peck, that would be after the development. It's not comparing greenfield development to full build. It's comparing BLI to R3.
So, do we know how many trips a day are on that road now?
Current daily volumes on Pike are around 19,000, a little under there.
So, if this is assisted, let's say that you're going to have about 400 people in these units, minimum. I don't understand, so you have to add that 400, not 27 or 45 more. You would have to add how many cars people would have to that volume. Is that, am I looking at that incorrectly?
Sure. Councilmember Peck, so the, two things going on here. So, the traffic study looked at the whole undeveloped area that's out there right now. I don't know the acres off the top of my head, but the senior family housing, I don't believe, is included in the rezoning, but they did assign trips for that, and looking at all of this, all of the undeveloped parcels out there, they came up with the daily trips around 3,500, and so that's-
So, it'd be 3,500 daily trips?
With the build-out of all the undeveloped area here, yes.
Okay. And it's also my understanding that the school district does not pick up children if they live within a mile. They don't send a bus if they will live within a mile of their school. So, what I'm hearing is that we have a lot of children trying to get to Flagstaff, and parents drive them because it's dangerous. The other thing that I'm seeing, it sounds like there needs to be a lot of traffic construction and engineering in our planning process before we, before we say we'll annex it for that many, for that kind of a development. So, I mean, when you say that the sidewalk is not in our CIP yet... Somebody's going to talk, I can tell.
Just to clarify some things, so the-
Okay.
The school districts already said that they're going to provide the bus-
Right.
Regardless of their current ruling.
I'll let Phil clarify a few additional things, but with regard to the school, we did send a referral to the district, as we do with most major development applications. These projects together, this rezoning, would add about 52 elementary students, 20 middle school, and 22 high school students, for a total of 94 additional students. There is not currently a bus, and there would not be a bus to Flagstaff because it's a charter school, so-
Right.
To a charter school, the district does not provide transportation. Because Pike is an arterial, people can request busing for the local area schools, you know, for example, Indian Peaks or Sunset. To our knowledge, that has not happened, but the applicant did reach out to the district after the Planning Commission meeting, and that is something that the district will do if a student needs to cross an arterial roadway.
Okay.
So, I'll let Phil and Tyler respond to the rest of the traffic questions. Sorry.
Yes, please.
The only thing I was going to mention, Phil Greenwald, Transportation Planner with the city, is that we originally looked at what it was under BLI for the zoning, and I think you understand that, that we were looking at the number of trips that were provided, and that was for the, kind of going back to Councilmember Bagley's question, that was going back to an idea of kind of this low-rise office as comparison to what is being proposed in the R3. There's a number of other uses that could have gone in there that would have, that can certainly bump up those traffic numbers, and it's allowed by right, or it's allowed in the zoning code to be more high-intensity kind of thing. I mean, I guess I'm not supposed to mention this, but if you think of the southwest corner of Hoover and Clover Basin, that's also business-like industrial, or that was business-like industrial, and those are some of the uses that have gone in there. So, restaurants, hotels, there's some other things that are conditional uses that can go in to that business-like industrial. So, we were trying to do the comparison based on something that was presented 15 years ago-
Right.
-as this low-level office, and try to compare it with what is being requested now. So, yes, there will be more trips because it's an empty field, but comparison-wise, that's what we were trying to do with, or that's what was trying to be done with the traffic study that was presented to us as a city.
Yeah. I do understand it. At this point, though, I don't think I can vote for the annexation for R3.
Just a rezoning.
That's right. It's not an annexation. It's a zone-changing. Sorry.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to clarify, Erin, wasn't there a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors and the developer?
Councilmember Finley, we did hold a neighborhood meeting in September. There may have been an additional neighborhood meeting that Balfour had. The applicant ran that meeting, so I can certainly let Pam speak to that meeting.
Just to clarify for Councilmember Bagley, so they had at least one neighborhood meeting, if not two. They had a public hearing at Planning and Zoning, right, where the public-
That is correct.
-once again voiced their concerns. So, this is the fourth public hearing. It's not like people haven't heard what the issues are. They've been very well spelled out. Also-
Just a minute. This is one meeting.
Also, this land was never, never-
Basically, excuse me, if you're attending the council meeting, you should also refrain from disruptive, vulgar, abusive language, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. The chair may take any reasonable steps to maintain the order, so please, if you're not, you know, tasked to speak and you're in the audience, don't speak, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This piece of land, as far, I go by there every day. It's been vacant forever. It was never zoned to be a park. It's been for sale forever, so anyone who wanted to purchase it for an Agra business could have done so during that time and asked for a rezoning, and that didn't occur. It's not going to remain a green area, no matter how badly the citizens around there want it. And I understand that, you know, everybody wants, you know, what's a vacant field to some people is green space for other people, but this land has always been zoned to be built on, not to be a park. Isn't that correct?
Census property was annexed about, I think, 30 years ago. It has been zoned for business-like industrial uses. It was, it has never been contemplated as a park. It doesn't show up in our recently adopted Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan as a park. It has been contemplated for urban development. When we went through the Envision process, you know, you'll recall that we spent a lot of time figuring out how we were going to accommodate additional growth within our planning area, and the notion of development within centers and corridors and using infill and redevelopment to accommodate growth so that we didn't have to expand our planning area and develop greenfield areas was one thing that we looked at. And so, this was a site in particular that we identified for a mixed-use employment center that could accommodate employment as well as other types of uses, secondary uses, including high-density residential because of its location and proximity to arterial roadways, transit, employment, and other types of things. So, you're correct. This has never been contemplated for a park or open space and has always been intended for development.
Also, there aren't, are we meeting the needs of our aging population at this point?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, I think if Michelle Wait were here-
I'm concerned.
-she would probably answer that better. I know that we are expecting a doubling in our aging population in the coming years, and that will have many implications for us. I also know that the portions of our aging population that are growing the fastest are the oldest older adults, and so, there is a vast need for facilities, not only living facilities, but other types of amenities and facilities for our aging population. So, I think that that's something we continue to have a need for.
And I think it's something we should consider with this rezoning change. I know that there's a great need for that, and we're not, we're not meeting it yet, and- And Balfour has a great reputation for helping with that aging population, which is one of the reasons I would be in favor of this rezoning. Also, this is a conditional approval, am I right on that? This is a conditional approval of the rezoning?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, council can condition a rezoning. There's a number of other applications that are currently being reviewed by staff, a number of other projects that are going on. The rezoning in itself isn't conditional. So if the rezoning were approved, the rezoning would take effect when the ordinance takes effect. And then that would enable an applicant to submit an application for, for example, site plan for senior living facility that would need to be reviewed. Without variances, that would be an administrative application. So notice would still go out, but there would not be a public hearing. The other applications that are currently being reviewed are a replat of the properties, public improvement plans that would get infrastructure ready for development. And in addition, the city has been working with the property owner and developer on negotiations to take over Outlet A, which is the, basically the floodway, so that the city could take ownership of that and have control for maintenance. And they're doing some cleanup as well after the flood. So there's a lot of other things that are going on, but the rezoning in itself isn't conditional unless council places conditions on it.
As I read, as I'm reading this ordinance right here in section three, it says, "As a condition of this approval, before receiving a, before receiving a further approval for development of subject property under the Land Development Code, the applicant shall engage in good faith conversations with city staff to develop the property in such a way that mitigates any impacts on, of development on pedestrian safety at the intersection of Hoover Street and Pike." That's in the ordinance. So it does have a condition in it that concerns traffic, or pedestrian traffic.
Councilmember Finley, that was the recommendation that PZ had, and so basically what their recommendation was and what this condition says is that prior to approving any site plans, we shall work with the developer to, to try to identify some solutions. The applicant talked about, we've already had one meeting with them, looking at improving, further improving the intersection at Pike and Hoover to add the additional crosswalk as well as the missing sidewalk link to provide a connection to the new underpass under 119. And so we've already started those conversations and so that's really what that condition is aimed at, is what additional improvements can be made in the area for pedestrian and bicycle safety. And so we'll continue to meet with them. A lot of that really is, you know, as Nick mentioned, there are some projects that are, you know, kind of further afield that the city has on our list. And so we just need to continue to talk about how we implement those.
So if we approve this rezoning, that's not the end of the story. We still have to go through site plan, all those things that you guys have to go through in order for development to occur. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. If a rezoning is approved, an application for a site plan for both projects would need to go through the Development Review Committee process.
Okay. Thank you. With those clarifications, I would move ordinance 2017-26.
Okay, ordinance has been moved in a second. I'm going to speak here. You know, this is a tough one, but, you know, we are an aging city and this will provide one need and, you know, for that. You know, these opportunities to, for senior housings don't come along very often with a willing developer that wants to do that. And I think we could probably work through a lot of the things during the next phase of this, during the site development, plan to alleviate a lot of these fears and work and perhaps get a CIP project to finish the sidewalks so the underpass is usable. So my thoughts are kind of leaning towards supporting it. Councilmember Christensen?
Do you know how, what our vacancy rate is now for business light industrial space? I wish our...
Council, Councilmember Christensen, I just looked at that and I want to say that for space used by primary employers, and I don't know if Sean knows this off the top of his head, but I want to say it's under ten percent. Last year it was like twenty-two percent. I think it fluctuates pretty widely depending on what is considered vacant, what, you know, what is under lease.
Sure.
But I think that's, I don't know that they track business light industrial space separately. There are some rather large properties that have space, but again, I think that fluctuates.
And we're always being told that we lack, people don't want to move, businesses don't want to move here because we lack Class A industrials, or Class A office space. And I'm just wondering why in thirty years they were not able to find anybody...
I think the applicant could probably speak to that if you'd like. I will not speak to that, but I think the applicant...
I have another question, though. If we did okay this, could we separate Lot One from Lot Two so, and okay a senior living facility, but it has to be zoned together, doesn't it? We either change the zoning to light, you couldn't make a senior living facility a conditional use of business light industrial, right?
Councilmember Christensen, the application before you tonight is a rezoning for, for those properties, so...
Both of them?
Yeah, the concept plan that is before council would specify that Lot One would be for senior living and Lot Two would be for multifamily.
Right. And you can't separate them.
I mean, I suppose council could do what they want. Yeah, I suppose you could make a motion. I don't know. I would look to Eugene for that.
Well, before we make any more motions, we already have a motion.
And I can, I'll have the applicant come up and answer your original question.
Yeah, I would like that, and then we can go ahead.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen. So Shandell Development has owned this property for twenty years, twenty-five years? And we owned everything from Left Hand Creek, so the east side of Sunset, all the way up. And we've slowly developed everything and we sat on this last parcel, these last, it was just one single parcel and now it's, we've tried to market that for numerous, numerous businesses, warehousing, and, and there was nothing. The market was dry. I can tell you, though, that, so we basically have now, we have two parcels. We have the parcel that we are going to rezone, hoping to rezone, and we have the current BLI parcel on the eastern side. That side, we do have two purchase and sale agreements that are fully executed based on what's going on right now. There is Class A office on the front side of that, up against Pike Street. So there is going to be a nice use right there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I would like to just chat with you, Councilmember Bagley, about the, the neighborhood meetings. So we actually had two. The first meeting that we had was just with, we presented the Balfour project to the neighbors. And we were told at the time that we could not spot-zone this area. So we'd have to take the, both lots and we'll rezone those. So Balfour stepped to the plate and said, "We will take that western portion." At the time, we were kicking around, McWhinney was in the picture, but we really didn't know to what extent. We knew Balfour was a home run for us, so we presented them to the neighborhood group with the caveat that what's going next to them is going to be apartments. They loved the Balfour idea, they hated the idea of not being able to know what that apartment scenario was going to look like. Fast forward a few months, McWhinney's further along in the picture, they have a nice site plan. We go back and we do a full neighborhood presentation again with both of them together. During the first meeting, it was a lot of comments about, "We don't want apartments, we don't want apartments, we don't want apartments." Second neighborhood meeting was the same thing. We had pictures of, you know, what the conceptual design would look like, and it was still, we just don't want apartments. We have worked with staff on addressing numerous issues that the neighborhood had. And I think we've satisfied a lot of those issues and I think we do have some more that we need to work through. But we definitely did reach out to the neighborhood and we did listen to what they had to say.
Councilmember Christensen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Peck? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is one of those ones that just, no one wants anything. It's interesting always. But it's always, you know, incumbent of us to try to make sure that we're having enough of, whether it's single-family homes or multifamily homes within the city of Longmont. We've heard time and time again how our vacancy rate for multifamily is very low. As Councilmember Bagley said, there's two thousand home, apartments in the pipe, but depending on who's here, you know, those folks don't want it near where they live. And I, and I get that. However, but also listening to the traffic concerns, because I have those same concerns. However, it's incumbent on this body here, the seven members of council, to make sure that we direct the city manager to direct staff that if there's issues that need to be addressed, then they need to be addressed. That can happen, it takes four votes. One of the first things I ever learned in council, four votes. Four votes to direct the city manager to, four votes to pass anything. I believe that while this is a rezoning, and Aaron said it, there are still several processes that have to be done when, should this ever, if this is rezoned and should a plan come forward for both of those parcels. There will be another planning and zoning meeting, there will be other public hearings. There can be. You know, if it comes to council, you know, we have public invited to be heard, we have public hearings on, on whether to approve or not to approve many things. As we did last week, we stretched it out and made it for two nights. So, and I understand the residents' concerns, but the needs of the, of the overall city need to be addressed. But I'm not saying that later on, should it come back and there's, it's, they're asking for a variance of fifty feet. I'm not sure anyone, you know, we've heard, we've heard that, you know, they're only going to go to forty-five. Again, no one wants, excuse me, forty feet. It's right here in my notes, too, forty. But it's, you know, trying to make sure that we have enough housing in all sectors of the city, whether it's multifamily or single-family homes. That's part of our job. You know, we are, as that sign says, we want you to, you know, you belong in Longmont. We want people here. We want families to come here. We want our kids to have families and come live here. We don't have, it's not no vacancy Longmont, and I would really hate to see that happen.
You know, Councilmember Moore has not had a chance, could you...
I certainly can, because Councilmore is just awesome.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I do have questions on traffic. Tyler's still here. My question is, we heard comment tonight about taking two traffic cycles to make a left-hand turn off of Sunset, I believe it was. Does that fall into any particular category in terms of level of service? We looked at the intersection of Hoover and Pike a lot, but did we look downstream or to the east of the new, of the intersection proposed at the east side of the property as well as at Sunset to make sure that we can have traffic movement there that is going to be convenient enough, adequate enough, and safe enough for the residents that may be living in those apartment buildings?
So, Councilmember Moore, yes, the study did look at those side accesses. Keep in mind Pike is an arterial with nineteen thousand cars a day on it, so unsignalized accesses on arterials typically operate poorly during peak hours. It's, any unsignalized intersection on Hoover would operate similarly, but I'm not going to sugarcoat it and say they'll operate at level of service A by any means.
So if I'm living there, I might have to wait ten minutes to get out of my neighborhood? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know if I have the delay numbers on there, but it could take a little while during peak hours.
That, I mean, really what I kind of heard tonight was that concerned with height, that is probably a wash if you consider BLI can be even taller. But traffic, I don't know that we've really satisfied the concerns of the residents about how the level of service will really affect them today. You say twenty-seven slash forty-seven, twenty-seven in the morning, forty-seven in the afternoon, increase from what could be there with a low rise. And we didn't look, we didn't consider any of the scenarios for BLI like a four-story office building. Is that correct?
Councilmember Moore, the comparison that showed the lower trip rate was to like a, similar to the office use that exists out there currently is what the comparison was to. It did not look at any four-story high-rise office.
So it could actually be, even be higher, is that, without, if we had a four-story office building there...
Councilmember Moore, but depending on square footage, yes, it could potentially...
Could even be higher, so... Is, is there any hope for traffic mitigation in the future down in that part of town? Because I know I used to drive it a lot. Even at seven o'clock in the morning, it was, you know, backed up a block or two at a time. So what are the future plans?
Councilmember Moore, so some of the plans that are in place on that corridor, so Pike and Hoover, the applicant is proposing to add nearly a quarter mile of additional eastbound lane on Pike in front of their project. That would allow us to add in the second southbound left-turn lane at Pike and Hoover. I heard a comment about eastbound left turns at Miller Drive in the morning to try and get to the charter school up there. So this extra lane would provide an opportunity for traffic continuing east to not be stopped by the, by the traffic trying to turn left into Miller Drive as well. Ultimately Pike would be widened to a five-lane arterial. It's in our, it's in our roadway plan. It's not a funded project, but it is on our roadway plan to ultimately widen Pike.
Okay, so there is hope in the future for improvements?
The other thing to mention is that we are kind of more broadly in that area. We're looking at a study that's going to start before, well, in September for the, we kind of call it the Southwest Longmont Operational Study, which is really looking at all those major intersections in that area of town to find out how they're operating and see what improvements can happen, specifically at Hoover and 119 or Ken Pratt Boulevard, Nelson and Hoover and Hoover, or Nelson and Ken Pratt Boulevard. So we are, we're starting to look at this more broadly than just, you know, zeroing in on one development's impact at one intersection. We're looking at a broader level because we hear these things all over town that, you know, there's issues at all these different intersections. So we're trying to look at, look at them as part of this envisioned Longmont piece that we put together last year.
Thank you, Phil, I was trying to get there, actually. Excuse me. I have an, a question on Outlet B. It's plugged and abandoned well, is that an oil well?
Councilmember Moore, that is correct. It is a plugged and abandoned oil well. And so our code requires that any building be set back a hundred and fifty feet from that.
Kind of like in Firestone?
No, this is a plugged and abandoned well.
So are we, do we know the method of plugging and abandoning was adequate and safe? And do we have any history on that? And have we tested anything around her?
Yes, the applicant has all of that information. We, do you want to just talk about this, Pam? Okay.
Pam Hora with Tetra Tech. Yes, we did have this looked at as part of our application. We had an engineer take a look at it. We actually dug up the well to look at it to confirm that it had been properly plugged... We actually dug up the well to look at it to confirm that it had been properly plugged and abandoned, consistent with the COGCC, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Service records. And so it, we did find that it had been properly plugged and abandoned per their requirements. And as Aaron indicated, this well is different than the one in Firestone, which was an active well.
Mayor, council, we also have a document on our website where we, we looked at those and we worked with Tetra Tech to evaluate those locations. What I will say is in light of recent, the recent incident in Firestone, one of the things that we are looking at is also looking at the collection line piece. What you may or may not have heard today is that what they indicated is that the explosion was the result of a collection line, not necessarily the well. And so that's another piece that we're starting to look at, just in other areas where we have plugged and abandoned wells.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Excuse me. So my overall concern is the traffic. And based upon what Phil Greenwald said, I would like a conditional that he's put on this rezoning that we put, looking at this area as far as traffic engineering at the top of, at funded projects, because we know this is going to be developed. And maybe some of the other intersections that you were talking about, we don't know if there's any development plans there yet. So since we know there's a traffic problem here, and we know that it's going to have to be looked at at some point, why don't we look at it before we actually allow a development to go in that's going to contribute to the traffic problem that's already there? And put it on a funded project? Does that make sense? Instead of waiting down the line until after it's built out?
Councilmember Peck, I think you can offer conditions to the motion. I will say that the traffic study looked at the intersections that were not meeting our benchmarks. And at the Pike and Hoover intersection, the applicant has proposed improvements that will mitigate and not, so that there's not a benchmark violation. And so they, as part of the other applications that we're working on, will be making improvements. Now, they will be paying for those improvements to improve the intersection at Pike and Hoover and add an additional lane to accommodate the increased traffic as a result of this development. And so that's already happening as part of their public improvement plans and replating. And Tyler can talk more about that if you want more information, but that piece is already happening. So the, I guess what I'm saying is the traffic, the violations and the increase in traffic borne by this development are being mitigated by the developer as part of the overall public improvements.
I would say if council wants us to put the remaining pieces of this where we look at it in our transportation plan, we could evaluate that. What I would say is it would really then necessitate a conversation in terms of what projects we would potentially not do in exchange for that funding. So we would need to bring that back to you and look at those improvements. In terms of, to echo what Nick said, in terms of the sidewalk finishing, we do have, that goes to the east, we do have the right-of-way, but again, it would be a similar conversation. If council directed us to finish that sidewalk heading east, then it would impact the other trail connections that we have planned. So those are all things that council can, can direct us to look at, but I wanted you to know that there will be trade-offs that we would have to evaluate.
So can we do that?
That's not even part of this meeting. We can decide that later. I mean, we're always free to direct staff. Once we know that this was going to happen, we can do that, but that's not, you know, the agenda item of this meeting is how we're going to spend our CIP. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, so let's suppose that we're a year in the future, right? And so we're a year in the future, we have an election coming up in November, and tonight we change it to high-density residential. They come back with this concept plan or a different concept plan, et cetera. There are certain tiers, how many units, how high the buildings can be, all that kind of stuff. To what extent, Mr. May, can council say, "No, I know what the range is, but no, you're too high"? Or you're, or can we insist, we have a legal right to insist that they go lower than the prescribed density or lower than the height allowed? Wake up Eugene, sorry.
Aaron, council, Eugene May, City Attorney. You don't like hypothetical questions as an attorney.
I know, but I'm not an attorney tonight.
There are density limits for R3 in the code.
Right.
There are a number of other criteria by which those applications are evaluated. If they're within the allowed density.
We cannot say no, correct?
That would not be an appropriate basis for denying that application in that zone district.
Okay, so that, I knew the answer, but I wanted to hear that from somebody smarter than me. The, although that's arguable, Mr. May. The, so I guess my, I guess my, is it possible, nor is there any guarantee that senior living will come forward? I mean, the concept plan that's currently in our packet, that could change. They're locked into this concept plan?
The concept plan that would be approved as part of the rezoning specifies that senior living would be built on Lot 1. If something else were to be built on Lot 1, they would have to go through this process again.
Got it. So essentially, we're locking in the senior living?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Is there a way to, in as far as the Lot 2 layout goes, are they locked into that as well?
A concept plan is general, and so, you know, I think generally we look at a concept plan to see where access is and to see types of buildings, but no, I think that generally we look at all of that during site plan. They need to meet their parking requirements, they need to meet landscaping, they need to meet setbacks, so really that detail comes at site plan.
Okay, because my, all right, so why is it one way for the senior living facility and that way for Lot 2 for the high-density residential?
If you look at the notes on the concept plan, it says Lot 1 is for senior living, Lot 2 is for multifamily dwellings.
Okay, just general.
They're locked into that use, correct?
Okay.
And generally, the concept plan shows a larger building kind of up on the north and smaller buildings to the south, and so that's what we would expect the site plan to see. Now, will the buildings be rectangular shape in that dimension? Probably not. But generally, we would expect that their concept plan would be something similar to that.
Right, I've got at least two and a half more years on council.
Aaron, to answer Councilmember Bagley's question, if they deviated from multifamily, they would have to go back through the process, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, but concept plan, they don't. They just have to, this is what we're going to do at the high-density residential?
It's going to be multifamily.
Right, right. We're multifamily. So is there, I guess the, with two and a half years left on council, which seems like an eternity.
Councilmember Bagley, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I should have let the applicant for the multifamily talk about what's shown on the concept plan. Do you want to hear from them?
No, no, it can change, so.
Well, I mean, I think generally that that's what's shown on the concept plan, what we would expect, but would you like a little more detail?
Maybe in a second.
Okay.
But I guess my concern is every time we approve multifamily, I drive by later on and go, "Wow, we really shoehorned a lot on there." And I just don't want that to happen on this one. And so is there a way to, A, approve this with addressing the neighbors' traffic concerns? B, making sure that there's no height variance, meaning we stick to the 40 feet? B, getting some type of firm promise from the developer that they will engage in good-faith talks with the neighbors to address their concerns, such as traffic, parking, pedestrian use, et cetera, et cetera? And that they aren't shoehorning buildings onto the lot? Is that possible? Is there a mechanism for doing that tonight?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, so I guess I would say our code is sort of the mechanism for doing that. We have a development code that's very specific about open space requirements, parking requirements, setbacks, number of units allowed, and so that, any deviation from that would require a variance, basically. Same with height, so, you know, you could condition the height, but it's, the code already conditions that. So, you know, they would need to go back through the public hearing process.
For the variance?
For a variance, that is correct. In terms of the traffic, you know, in order to approve any site plan, in order to approve the replat and the public improvement plans, they're working on the traffic mitigation measures that have been spelled out to add the additional capacity to the Hoover and Pike intersection and additional capacity at Pike. I think the applicant is also willing, we've talked about the sidewalk connection on Hoover. I think the applicant is also willing to build the sidewalk connection on Pike. That's not something that's come up before tonight, but he could come back up and talk about that. I think I heard him say he'd be willing to build that, that was another neighbor concern. And so I think those things that you mentioned are kind of inherent in the code. Those conditions already exist. Certainly council could put additional conditions on their motion.
Okay. Did he want?
Do you want to hear more about the multifamily?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. David Jottis, 620 Elm Street, Representative McWinnie. But to address your concerns, yes is the answer. During the neighborhood meetings, we took steps to change the buildings, lower the heights, increase the parking ratios, and, you know, one point I wanted to make is we intend on owning this asset for a very long time. We are not what you call a merchant developer, where we're going to build this, lease it, and then sell it. We onsite manage, so I very much intend on working with the neighbors moving forward to help address some of the concerns you heard tonight, which would include increased landscaping, open space. So I just wanted, I thought it would be helpful, because it felt like we weren't communicating. I just want to make clear, we've had several meetings, and we hope to have many more during the site plan process. Thank you.
Thanks.
We've got a motion. It's been seconded, we've had discussion. Let's vote. We have to. Okay, it passes 5 to 2 with Councilmember Christensen and Councilmember Bagley descending.
Mayor Coombs? Mayor Coombs?
Yes.
I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So as Councilmember Peck brought up, Harold, and Nick Wolf, from where'd you go? Hi, Nick. So you guys are working on budget right now for 2018. During that process or anytime sooner, I'd like to, I'm sure council would like to see the improvements that have been talked about tonight in this area and where they would fit within the CIP for 2018. So can I get consensus of council, that we'd like to see something like that?
Well, you know, it really does depend a little bit. I mean, I totally agree with, but we also have to make sure that we're not cutting a critical program.
Oh, no, Mayor, I completely understand, but it's those, again, those options that the seven members of council can make, but I think those options should be presented at least to us.
Okay, great.
Just a thought.
I agree.
So what I hear is we'll bring back the options at this location with any potential impacts it would have, and council will give us policy direction on those.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Um, I can't remember.
Joni.
Yeah.
Sorry, Joni.
Yes.
Mayor Council, Joni Marsh, Director of Planning and Development Services. So it's PUDR with a medium density or mixed residential comp plan designation.
Thank you. So what it seems is, you know, it's not open space. It's purchased with open space funds. But however, whenever we get this information back, council might want to consider during that time as well to bring back some ordinance to change the, if it's council's desire, to change the zoning to P, to actually make it open space. So it's just, I'm just throwing out suggestions here because again, I think the designation of what it is and what people think it is are two different things. And, you know, at that meeting, hopefully, we'll also discuss if properties purchased with open space funds, there needs to be a timeframe when zoning is changed, if it's something other than P.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm asking for some information for anybody who was here when this was purchased because it was my understanding that it was only purchased with some funds from open space, not entirely.
That's right.
I don't know why, what kind of thing was, what kind of deal was cooked up, but it is partially funded. So it's kind of in no man's land, really. I don't know why it was partially purchased with open space funds. Anyway, but that isn't the same as something that actually is open space and it's solely purchased by open space funding, right?
So there were multiple funding sources used to purchase that property. Open space was one, stormwater was one. Dale, what was the other one? I can't, I can't remember all of, but while Dale's coming up here, when you have, when you purchase property with open space funds, you then have to go through the disposition of open space in order to get rid of it. And that was what you heard from some of the comments, meaning you have to do the appraisal and then you have to adequately compensate the open space fund for the purchase of that land. I can't remember. Dale, you want to finish the?
Mayor Combs and members of council, Dale Rademacher, Public Works Natural Resources, city manager is correct. About nineteen or so of the acres was open space funding. The total parcel size is about thirty-five acres. So a swath down through the middle of it on either side of Spring Gulch was purchased with storm drainage funds with the idea being that the storm drainage fund would buy the width that would constitute the flood plain, similar to what we did, by the way, on the Adrian, open space acquisitions to the west, or excuse me, to the east. Water Fund also purchased a strip through there for the future Union Reservoir Pump Back Pipeline. Sanitary Sewer has a trunk going through there. And the Street Fund purchased the area along County Lane Road. And so he's right, a variety of funds. The largest one, the largest fund, however, was the open space fund.
Mayor.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Again, it's disconcerting when you hear things called cooked up. When you have an opportunity to plug a well that is in question, the city with council and staff found a way to purchase, plug that well. Nothing was cooked up. Cooked up sounds like something nefarious, but it was what the council at the time thought was it's, was in the best interest of the community and how, you know, but the nineteen acres is not open space. It's PUDR. And if we're going to change it, then we need to change it.
Councilmember Pick?
Can I turn the conversation a little bit? Are we?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. So going back to the presentation on where we stand in law enforcement, I was wondering if I could give a little bit direction or ask a question if we could possibly put that on the agenda for the study session on May sixteenth, if we have room for it there? Just, just a suggestion.
Yeah. I've actually had a conversation with Mike Butler and we're good on the timing on that.
Okay.
What I was also going to say is based on what I've seen, there's also some other information that I think from the broader organization that we would want to add to that as well, if that's okay with council.
Absolutely.
But I think we can, we can hit that timeline.
The more input from staff the better.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, during this conversation, I think we may have missed city manager comments, but I think one of the things that you've seen is there has been additional concern brought forward based on the situation that occurred in Firestone. We were planning to have a more formal information piece to council on this. We've been in meetings on multiple occasions talking about the situation, but what I did want to let council know is that we are evaluating these other locations based on the information that is on the website that's been there for a few years in terms of these plugged and abandoned wells. Obviously, as you get new information in, you look at different situations and so we are going through that process and developing a plan to, to evaluate those locations more in depth.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have no problem with the two weeks from now, but I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward, this is such a divisive topic. It's such an emotionally and politically charged topic. This is the second week now that we're going to dedicate a lot of council time to this topic. I just want to make sure that we continue to do what we've done tonight, which is make sure we're getting the city's business done as we are still having this conversation.
Yeah. I think one of the things that the mayor and I are going to have to do is look at our agenda and timing and when we're placing items and potentially moving things forward that we may need to. So that'll be a conversation that we'll have.
All right. Now it's time for public invited to be heard and our esteemed clerk Valerie is going to read off the block of names. Could you read off like five at a time so everybody knows who they're?
Yes, I will. So the first five names that I read off would come down front so that you're ready to go. That would really be appreciated. Russ Bohim will be first. Steve Altshuler, Volka Mitchell, Donald Schmidt, and Judy Marchino. If you'll all come down close, then you'll be ready to go. Thank you. And Russ, you're first.
Mayor, can I jump in before we actually start this?
Sure. Okay. Yeah.
One of the things that we talked about is we know that there's a fairly extensive list again for public invited to be heard. There's two items on the, the water plan and the, what was the other one?
Bud Rock Preserve.
Bud Rock Preserve.
Yeah.
Those were intended to be informational items. We can bring those back as part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
And council can vote on it.
Let's do that.
You all need to decide whether you want to have a full presentation on it.
Why don't we do that so we can send those staff people home? Is that all right with you guys?
Can you email it to us?
Well, you have the, yeah, it's the information that's on there. We were just going to provide a presentation ahead of voting, voting on it on consent agenda. So it's council's discretion is what you want to do on that.
Okay. Let's just put it on consent if that's okay with everybody. Okay. Thank you. All right. Now we'll start public invited. Sorry.
Russ, you're up now. Russ? Yes, you're up now.
Hey Valerie, you want to turn on the mic?
Yes, to turn on.
I'm for one.
There you go.
No mic?
It's on.
Is it on now? Okay. I came for primarily for one reason. Last week, we were assured that there was no discussion, no plans, no talking, no work being done on a sanctuary city. And I picked up a paper and found that our chief law enforcement agent is in uniform at a play three business days later, plus two weekend days, making a statement that says undocumented, read illegal immigrants get help telling their stories. In fifty years of living in Longmont, I have never seen a police officer get up and start defending someone who has admitted that they have violated a federal immigration law. I'd like to remind the council too, that back in the nineties, I remember we sent billions of American tax dollars and millions of American jobs out from under workers in this country south of the border to Mexico and Central America because they had a cultural problem of people with no jobs and a financial problem of people with no money, and they were coming to this country trying to get a better life. That was all going to stem the tide. It seems that for whatever reason, I don't know if it is the government, the people, the economy, or the culture, all of our generosity has been squandered and we're back at ground zero with people coming back en masse claiming that they are desperate. And I don't understand that at all. You have the right to file for a visa and come here. If you are desperate, if your life is in danger, you can come here as a refugee. And we have a different set of circumstances by which we handle refugees. They didn't do either one. They're coming illegally. One thing I'm pretty sure I remember, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe that any of you ran on a campaign platform that said, I am going to make illegal immigrants a higher protected status class than a citizen or illegal immigrant. And I don't remember you saying that you were going to fight for Longmont to become a sanctuary city. I don't remember that. But there are several campaign pledges that you made that have not been met. Please, this term, keep your pledges. If you want to run for a sanctuary city, do that in your campaign speech for your next term, but please don't change horses in midstream. We don't deserve it. Thank you.
No clapping. Steve.
Steve Altshuler.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Taylor Mountain Drive. For the city council, the first responsibility of any federal, state, or local government is to keep its citizens safe, safe from crime, safe from danger, and safe from outside harmful influences. We are a nation of laws. In a perfect world, these laws protect us from the criminals and the stupidity of others. People that would steal our money, go to jail. People that would risk our safety by driving at sixty-five miles an hour in a school zone, go to jail. People that would invade our house and harm us, go to jail. All branches of government, local, state, and federal, must work together to ensure the safety of all citizens. If someone robs a bank, or kidnaps a child, or steals a car in one city or state, they can and by law are arrested in another city or state by any city, state, or federal officer. They are then held by local police and extradited to the location where the crime was committed. Last week, a gentleman expressed that nobody is born illegal. That is true. But after they are born, many choose to commit crimes. Some are drug dealers, some are rapists or robbers, some are gang members, and for many, their only crime is to enter a country without legal documentation. Make no mistake, entering into and living in any country without that country's permission is illegal. All a sanctuary city does is to protect illegal trespassers, they're not American citizens, from the prosecution of our laws. I don't get that protection. Members of the council don't get that protection. Why on earth should that protection be given to people that don't even belong here? Even worse, sanctuary cities are designed to protect the worst of all the illegals. They protect those who have also committed other crimes after arriving here, often felonies and usually more than once. Is your house locked right now? Is your car locked right now? Is your place of business locked right now? Why do we lock up the things we own? Because they're ours. We want our wives, children, cars, possessions, and businesses to be kept safe and to be there unharmed when we return. If someone should steal our possessions or harm our loved ones, we want that person punished, not protected in a sanctuary city. All the members of city council were elected to help protect the citizens of Longmont, to make Longmont an even better place to live and a safer place to live for the citizens of Longmont. You were not elected to break federal laws because you might think it's the right thing to do. You were not elected to protect people that might do harm to the citizens of Longmont. I don't care if a criminal is white, black, brown, gay, lesbian, or any other distinction. Criminals need to be locked up and good citizens need to be protected. I say no to sanctuary cities.
Thank you.
Volka Mitchell, Europe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Sanctuary cities protect illegals and enable them to commit new crimes once they re-enter the U.S. illegally because the aliens would not have to fear Immigration and Customs Enforcement once they entered the domain of the sanctuary cities. On March sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, in Rockville, Maryland, two illegal aliens raped and sodomized a fourteen-year-old girl, Henry Sanchez Millian, eighteen, of Guatemala, and Jose Montano, seventeen, of El Salvador. And both MS-13 gang members had been placed in the same grade level as the fourteen-year-old. The girl was violated in every way possible, in the bathroom of the school. The illegals had been in the U.S. for only a few months. They had exchanged text messages planning the attack. The school is only twenty miles from the White House. On March twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, in New York, Tommy Alvarado Ventura, an illegal thirty-one-year-old member of MS-13 in El Salvador and had been deported four times, brutally stabbed a woman in a parking lot, assaulted and slashed his girlfriend with a knife, and horrifically attacked a two-year-old child sexually. Ever Valles, a nineteen-year-old illegal from Mexico and known gang member, was released from Denver Jail on December twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Denver officials allowed him to walk out free without notifying ICE until after he was gone. On February seventh, two thousand seventeen, less than two months later, Valles, along with Nathan Valdez, nineteen, was charged with the murder of Timothy Cruz, thirty-two, who had been shot and killed at a light rail station. On October thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, Norland Estrada Reyes, twenty-seven, an illegal alien from Honduras, had been arrested twice and deported once, struck and killed. Twenty-eight-year-old Karina Pulek, a young Denver lawyer, dragging her for fifty feet with a Ford pickup truck, which he abandoned after the hit-and-run collision. ICE had not been informed of his release from prison. Kate Steinle was murdered in San Francisco on July first, two thousand fifteen, shot in the back by an illegal alien, Juan Francisco Lopez Sanchez, who had been deported five times, but was returned to the sanctuary city after he was released from jail in April two thousand fifteen. ICE was never notified. Sanctuary cities protected all these illegals and enabled them to commit new crimes once they re-entered the U.S. illegally because the aliens would not have to fear ICE once they entered the domain of the sanctuary cities. Beware, Longmont City Council. I believe that once Longmont is declared a sanctuary city, our children will not be safe and the crime rate will skyrocket because illegals will have nothing to fear.
Next is Donald Schmidt.
I'm Donald Schmidt, forty-fifteen Da Vinci Drive. Mayor Combs, city council members, we're all immigrants. I'm the son of two immigrants. I have no problem with immigrants at all from all different kinds of countries and places, but I have a problem with how people come here. In my family history, through great hardship in World War II, et cetera, my parents came to this country through legal means, suffered discrimination, et cetera, but were, well, legal and proud and respected and were not afraid to look over their shoulder and worried that somebody might, you know, be looking for them or looking to deport them or whatever. I hope people come here and live with honor and I think that Longmont's a great and safe city. I'm very happy to live here. I'd like to stay safe and I just don't see that hamstringing the police force and immigration is a way to create a better city. Thank you.
Next would be Judy Marchino and after Judy, the following five would make their way down. Raymond Alvarez, Walter Engelhardt, Kathy Mock, Leslie Thatcher, and Kathy Jarrett. Go ahead, Ms. Marchino.
I'm Judy Marchino and I live on Purdue Drive in Longmont. I am here to tell you that I lived sanctuary city for decades in my neighborhood. Out my front window, I could see drug deals going down. First, it started out with people walking down the street, having parked their cars far away, so nobody would figure it out. And it took me a long time to figure out what was going on, that the kid across the street was dealing drugs out of his bedroom window. Well, we started seeing cars from other states and we went to the police and we got nowhere. And I mean, zero help. We fed them whatever they wanted, but we never heard from them. So finally, after things got to crisis point in our experience, a police officer happened to be visiting our neighborhood and saw what was going on down the street from us. So let me tell you what it's like to live in a sanctuary city when no one cares to do anything about illegal drug traffic. We never knew if the block was going to blow up. We didn't know what they were doing in that house. We saw people coming from Kansas, from South New Mexico, from Wyoming, and from Utah. They were coming in there to pick up drugs. We saw mules coming in during the middle of the night, car doors slamming, opening up, shutting down, people having arguments. We did not know that we were not able to sleep at night, a solid straight night. Finally, something was done. And I'm grateful to the police department and the gentlemen that worked on this case because it's now quiet in my neighborhood. I don't want to see Longmont go through women screaming in the middle of the night because they didn't get what they wanted and men yelling in the middle of the street that they're going to burn down the neighborhood. I shouldn't have to live with that in Longmont, but I shouldn't have to live with it on Purdue Drive. And I'm going to ask you, you've been approached to change the law and the way you function as a, as a law-abiding community. So what happens next? What, if they win, what is their next question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Raymond Alvarez. Raymond? Okay. How about Walter Engelhardt?
My name is Walter Engelhardt. I live at ten-six-fifty Yellowstone Road in Longmont. Mr. Mayor and council members, you know, I can identify with the Latinos wanting to live and remain in our free society and the opportunities afforded to them for a better life. I am a son of immigrants. Both my father and mother were immigrants. They came here on invitation and had sponsors to bring them in. My mother came as a child because her father had a vocation that was needed at the time and came through Ellis Island. And she lived in Longmont for a period of time. Her mother was turned back because of an eye infection that was allowed to come after the infection was healed. My dad came here when he was fourteen years old to San Francisco where his brother sponsored him. Before I was born, my mother and father applied for citizenship and became citizens. They did it the legal way. They were married here in Longmont, so my heart is here in Longmont. For the most part, Latinos are very good people, family-loving and hard-working people. However, there are some bad apples like in any other ethnic group. Here's where I have the problem with making Longmont a sanctuary city. By making our city a sanctuary city, their demands are to, are not to collect data on any undocumented folks. This opens the door to not having a history of the bad things they do. It also opens the door for other groups to come into our city, like radical Muslims. Now again, there can be good, they can be good people, but it is well-known fact that radical Muslims say death to America. I also know that they are targeting Longmont as a city they want to infiltrate. Now for this very reason, I am again against, I am against becoming a sanctuary city. I ask you as leaders of this community, please, keep Longmont citizens and those wishing to integrate into our society safe by saying no to becoming a sanctuary city. Proponents for becoming a sanctuary city really don't know what the future will hold and what happens in the near future. If Latinos want to integrate into our way of life here, help them find a way to become a citizen rather than hiding behind the law. Work with the federal government to get a path to citizenship. Thank you very much.
Kathy Mock, followed by Leslie Thatcher. Is Kathy Mock here? Okay. How about Leslie Thatcher? Okay. Kathy Jarrett? After Kathy will be Sonia Marquez, Bob Crone, Kimberly Lavender, Stephanie Benes, and Peg Cage. Go ahead, Kathy.
My name is Kathy Jarrett. I live at fifteen-thirty-two Stewart Street in Longmont. I would like to ask you to not even consider a proposal to become a sanctuary city. I understand that twenty-seven percent of the federal prison population is made up of illegal immigrants and that ninety-eight percent of the gang, I think it's SM or is MS-13, are illegal immigrants in Los Angeles. I don't think we need that here. And I would not take up a whole lot of time just to say, please, do not let Longmont become a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Sonia Marquez.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and council. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Sonia Marquez and I'm a new homeowner, just purchased a home in my childhood neighborhood in Southmore Park, and I'm really excited about that. First of all, I just want to thank you all for your time and attention. I know that there has been a lot of discussion, a lot of emotions around the issue. And I just want to say that there has been, there's just a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of misinformation. I feel it's because of the lack of education around the issue of undocumented immigrants in our community. Undocumented immigrants are contributing members of our community and they are tax-paying business owners, students in our community. And I feel like there is a lack of education around the contribution and understanding on the opposition. And that is one thing that as Director of the Colorado Immigrant Rights Coalition, that I commit to continuing to do, is having these open conversations of what, what this means. Now, the reason for us putting forward a request, and thank you so much, Mayor, for putting forward this request for staff to address what is, what does this look like? What are our current policies? What is it that we already do? And how do we collaborate in these ways? Because some, some of the things that I've heard is we are already doing some of this work. But the problem is, is that that's not communicated to the immigrant undocumented community and therefore it causes a lot of fear. I have educators here. I've had healthcare professionals say that a lot of the undocumented community members are fearful of taking their children to the hospital, to getting the proper care that they need. There's a lot of fear in the schools, things that are going on. And that is, you know, something that we need to do is really understand what are the current policies and so that we can therefore, you know, provide this education to the community. And I think that's key on both sides, is providing education to the community. And so thank you so much for directing staff to look into this and making sure that we can have clarity on how to move forward and just know that, you know, collaboration between ICE, we don't need to do federal immigration's job for them. They have plenty of resources to do their They have plenty of resources to do their work. And what we need to do is make sure that we are providing clear information on how this is being done so that this can be taken to the immigrant community. So thank you all for taking on this responsibility to serve our community and make sure that our community members are well-educated and everybody's informed on the process and procedure. And I look forward to moving forward with this with you. And thanks again.
Thank you.
Lost my place, I'm sorry. Bob Krone? And then Kimberly Lavender?
Bob Krone, 916 Francis. We are a nation of immigrants, and here comes my big but, but we did it legally. I appreciate the fact that people want to come here. My family wanted to come here. They've been here for hundreds of years. Do it legally. Do it the... I have friends who have done this and they've taken years to do it legally. I expect that if you guys vote for a sanctuary city, that at 2:00 AM, your doors better be open for me to come in to be safe. And don't you dare ask me why I'm in your house at 2:00 AM.
Kimberly Lavender?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your service to our community. So the 2010 U.S. Census showed that 1 in 6 Longmont residents are immigrants. And this is not surprising, given Longmont's 146-year-old history. By 1910, our Chicago-planned community had doubled, attracting immigrants from Europe, Asia, and Mexico, with our soil, our proximity to the railroads, and our policies, both government and economic. And so I'd like us to consider our history and our geography as we discuss sanctuary as a community. When I think about our history, I'm actually thinking about one in which the borders have crossed people, not people crossing borders. So supporters of sanctuary cities argue that enforcement or federal law is not the duty of local governments and actually results in an unfunded mandate and state and local law enforcement enforcing federal immigration law that they're not trained to do. Supporters of sanctuary cities argue that enforcement or federal law is... Excuse me. Opponents of sanctuary cities argue that cities should assist the federal government in enforcing immigration law. And I just wanted to add, we've heard from folks tonight against sanctuary, it sounds like there's a lot of fear around crime and they might be conflating several issues. So getting back to sanctuary cities, studies on sanctuary cities have not shown an increase in crime, rather lower crime, stronger economies than comparable non-sanctuary cities. So let's look at that and let's look at our state of Colorado. People have lived in Colorado for 13,000 years. We were part of Spain and Mexico before the United States. Conquistadors named our state Colorado in the 1500s before the pilgrims landed on Plymouth Rock. The oldest town in our state of Colorado, San Luis, was populated by immigrants from Santa Fe, New Mexico, Mexican immigrants, Spanish families, Incostia County, Colorado. This state was settled by Mexican families. Our rivers, our towns are named with Spanish names and Native American names, a testament to the people who have long lived in our state. And I think my time is up, but I just...
Kimberly, your time is up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Stephanie Benes? Followed by Peg Cage, Anne Hunter, Wynne Engelhardt, Albert Bonner, and Strider Benston.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Benes and I live at 532 Gay Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to share news of a hateful racist letter that my dear friends and neighbors received last Wednesday. Perhaps you've read the news story on the front page of The Times Call today or saw it on the news last night. They were told you and your family should not be in this white neighborhood. You and your brown boys are not welcome. Go back to where you came from. It's unfortunate that the hateful and fear-based rhetoric from the leader of our nation has normalized this kind of behavior. This is not okay. Regardless of your political affiliation, this type of activity must not be tolerated. This is not the Longmont that I love. This family is so involved in our community. They are teachers, coaches, volunteers, and we've got their back. Thankfully, they've received a huge outpouring of support, but what about others who are on the receiving end of similar hateful messages? They may not be so willing to come forward and share their story. I implore you not to be complacent or quick to label this fake news. This is real and it is happening in our community. Please be aware, vigilant, and look out for each other, both neighbors and strangers. Speak out against hate and ignorance. Please do your part to help Longmont be the safe, inclusive, and friendly community that it should be.
I'm sorry, Peg Cage?
Greetings, Longmont City Council and Mayor. My name is Peg Cage. I live on Vermillion Trail in Longmont. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. You were elected by your peers to represent this small part of a larger community with the full understanding that you and the community you represent are subject to the laws and regulations of the larger communities of the city of Longmont, the state of Colorado, and the federal government of the United States of America. The federal government of the United States was created by people seeking sanctuary from governments made up of people who used their positions to subjugate and enslave their people. Our first president said it best when he said that government is not reason. It is not eloquence, it is force. Like fire, it is a dangerous servant and a fearful master. Never for a moment should it be left to irresponsible action. There seems to be a lack of education about the reason for the greatness and exceptionalism of our country. Our government was founded on the concept that all people are created equal. When governments at any level make any law that create a class of people who are above and not subject to the laws, they play with fire. It would be irresponsible action to allow Longmont to become a sanctuary city, in the sense that some of the people would not be subject to the laws of our community. I agree that Longmont should be a city that offers sanctuary, a sanctuary in the sense of a sacred, safe place for everyone, in the sense of the place that people go to get away from oppression or intimidation, in the same sense that our country was founded, this country of the people, for the people, by the people, and guaranteeing the God-given natural rights of all people to justice and liberty and the pursuit of happiness. I believe this issue is dividing our community and that Longmont City Council should be focusing on ongoing flood recovery, making good decisions on development, and making sure it's a sanctuary for business owners and our community's citizens. And I thank you and I pray that you don't make it a sanctuary city.
Anne Hunter?
Anne Hunter, 430 Emory. So I'm speaking in support of making Longmont a sanctuary city. Even more than that, I think we need to not only have someone educate the staff and the council, I think we need education for everybody about what a sanctuary city is. So I hope you'll do what you said, but go beyond that too, because I really think the community needs to come together and talk about this with a little more clarity. A lot of what people have said sounds utterly terrifying, but it's actually not what a sanctuary city is. And it's a little complicated because different localities are approaching it differently. I started to research it and I realized there's a lot more than can be said in three minutes about it. But I just want to say briefly, I think that sanctuary city status for Longmont will keep all of us safer. It won't put us in more danger because it will encourage people to work with the authorities, including the police. It will encourage people to report crimes. It is not about making anyone exempt from the law or inviting criminals to come here. It's nothing like that. It's saying that when working with people on criminal issues or health issues or safety issues, they won't be reported, enabling everybody to be able to come. If people are afraid to talk to the authorities, it creates a chilling effect, not only for people without papers, but also for people whose papers are in order, but they don't want to do anything that might jeopardize keeping them that way. They're afraid that ICE will give them a hard time, even if their papers are good. And maybe they just don't want to get their neighbor in trouble because they don't know if they hear something and they report it, whether that means that the neighbor will be deported. So federal courts have confirmed that under the Tenth Amendment, local jurisdictions are not legally required to assist ICE. ICE, as someone said before, has plenty of resources and are getting even more if things go the way that the current administration wants. And President Trump's executive order is actually being challenged. It is not necessarily legal. Sometimes you have to look at the law and not just jump at anything that anyone says is the law. You have to look at what the law really is. So it's too easy to jump into arguing about this without fully understanding it. And what I suggest we do, no matter what we decide to do in the end, is take more time and allow the community to really educate itself.
Thank you.
Wynne Engelhardt?
Mayor? City Council, thank you for having me here again. I'm definitely against a sanctuary city. Boulder now is already a sanctuary city, correct? So I understand that if Longmont becomes a sanctuary city, is it very possible that it's already written in that the whole Boulder County will be sanctuary city? It's already there? If Longmont is... Okay. Okay, yeah. And, you know, I've been hearing people speak too of these high-rise, three-story buildings that are just coming all around Longmont. And I don't have to deal with them because I'm out in the country and I love it, but I feel for them. And it is a perfect setup, all these buildings, to accept sanctuary city folks. It's really a good setup. I don't know how many older people would want to climb all those steps to those apartments, truthfully. But, yeah, I just... I don't know. It's... I thought it was just Longmont, but it will be the whole county of Boulder, correct? Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had to say.
I am against the concept of sanctuary city.
So you need to start by stating your name and your address first?
Bonner. I live in 1851 Lockmore Drive.
Thank you.
I'm a teacher, a sub-teacher. I get around to all the schools and basically all the subjects. And I find it astounding the amount of ignorance of basic civics that I'm finding out there. Who knows about the Magna Carta and the Mayflower Compact, the Declaration of Independence, the Federalist and Anti-Federalist Papers, the Constitution? These kids have no clue. And I wonder how many of you on the council have read all of these? But anyway, that point being made, I'm seeing a basic level of taking the law for granted. You know, what does it take to maintain this representative republic that we've inherited? I believe it was Thomas Paine who said, "What we obtain too cheap, we regard so lightly." We have been given, we stand or sit on the shoulders of great people with great ideas that came before us. And I would like to, in my own story, I'm not an immigrant, son of an immigrant, and a son of 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 an immigrant. I hope that doesn't make me inferior. My family came over, having come from the unfortunate side of a war in York then, came as indentured servants, which is an indentured slave for a set amount of time, seven years. Well, they were told that if they fought for the Continentals, they would be given their freedom, which they did, and they inherited some land in Rocky Mountain, Virginia. But they wanted to learn about the Constitution. They wanted to be Americans. Americanism isn't a color of the skin, it's not a religion, it's a concept, great ideas. One thing I miss about being back east is the battlefields. Unlike most anyplace else in the world, this was unique. They were fighting over great concepts, federalism versus the Confederacy. Anyway, the maintenance of the republic demands people obey the law. Now, you here in the council, people coming from other countries, see what you're doing and see a contempt for federal law. Local towns, local states are not allowed to do whatever they jolly well will. I'm done. But anyway, I'm against the concept of sanctuary city and I think it's lawlessness.
Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Greetings, Mayor and council. I appreciate Anne Hunter pointing out the Tenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, which is very interesting. People on the right wing in this country want, hey, get rid of federal government, but then they want a national police force like the Nazis had. That's kind of the game that's going on here, and there are many strange bases for it. I do think we need serious public education, which is kind of hard now we have a Secretary of Education who is against public schools. So how are people gonna learn these things if you don't have some type of education system that includes that? We have a president who is erratic, impulsive, ignorant, racist, megalomaniac, and has an entire lifetime of not paying the people who work for him, many of whom he imported illegally from Poland and other places so that he wouldn't have to pay them. But now he's sitting up on top and he's appointed the Ku Klux Klan to run the Department of Justice. So that's very interesting. One thing about sanctuary cities is that you don't become a national police force. And therefore, people would feel safer to where they can report local crimes. Longmont is one of the safest cities in the country of its size, maybe even at the absolute top, because we do have human relations and integration and discussion with the police force and the citizenry. One of the things, the people who are so against it, they don't want undocumented people to be able to have driver's licenses, therefore you can't keep track of them. That is... That is, I mean, it's patently crazy to have those kind of policies that marginalize and dehumanize a significant portion of our population. So I would just say that we need to have a public forum, which is well-controlled, to where the city and the police and legal people can present the entire concept to where we can have a rational hearing and discussion of it. And I think a lot of this shooting-from-the-hip stuff is really dangerous and really racist. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So now we're on to general business.
And the only item remaining on general business is your Boston Sunset Annexation Referral, and Eva Pajewski will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Eva Pajewski, Planning and Development Services. I'll be short and brief. I know it's rather late in the evening. This is an annexation referral, again, at the northeast corner of Boston and Sunset, seven-and-a-quarter-acre parcel. Northeast corner, I don't know what I just said. I'm sorry, it's late. They're requesting commercial zoning on the property, and as you've seen on the concept plan, it's fairly vague. And that was just by design to give them the flexibility so they can figure out what they're going to do in terms of detail. But you'll see on the concept plan, they do envision about 110,000 square feet of commercial use with 32 live-work dwelling units. So that's about the extent of the detail of the concept plan. And we have Justin McClure tonight from Foundry Builders, who would like to make a short presentation to talk about sort of the vision that they have for this property. And with that, I'll turn it over to Justin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Justin McClure with Foundry Builders, 21 South Sunset Street, here in Longmont. It is late, and I will be brief. It's a pleasure to have the city's attention this evening for our request for annexation. I do have a very, very short slideshow. It's two slides.
Nice.
It's sweet.
We already liked you.
I think I'm on it. It's been a while since I've used a PC. Again, this is a concept-level plan that's really commercial zoning associated with the annexation request. And this evening, of course, is just a referral, which would put Foundry Builders, my company, in a situation to move forward and do the real work with a formal annexation process. But this is just a draft concept plan with a couple of quick perspectives. I think I could slide forward. And really, what you're seeing is kind of adaptable space, flex space, with live-work space. 110,000 square feet is going to be really driven by parking and the associated uses, which we're unaware of right now as we move through process. We're going to figure those details out. And at a high level, you know, my company has been doing projects throughout the Front Range for over a decade. We have a lot of projects in Erie and Lewisville, Mountains, Boulder County, Gilpin, et cetera. We're really a legacy-based company. So we're focused on comprehensive redevelopment efforts and specifically urban infill. So with this parcel here, we actually control, oh, just about 30 acres in this area, and we've been working on assembling land for just over three years now. It is an arduous process. It's an expensive process, and it's inherently fraught with risk. So I respectfully request approval this evening to move forward. And thank you very much for your time, and I'm going to open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any questions, or would anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Peck?
I move that we, I'm sorry, I don't have a voice. Somebody else do it.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here's the perennial question for developers. Will any of these, I like the plan that you have, a mixed workspace, and I think it's a good location for mixed business and residential, and it's a great location. So will any of these residential units be under $1,000 a month to rent?
Currently, right now, whether it's for sale or for rent, we're not sure. And probably the quick answer to that's going to be no, but it depends. And the live-work units right now that we're proposing, 32 units by Longmont City Code, is a 60/40 split between commercial and residential space. And whether that's a for-sale or for-rent product, we're not sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I have no questions. I just, I moved authorized staff to continue the process of the annexation application, finding that the annexation would be in the interest of the city. Referring the application does not obligate the council to approve the annexation.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Bagley?
Thanks, Mayor Coombs. I think, I mean, granted, it's just preliminary, it's a draft, but I think it's, it fits well with that area of the city. You're taking advantage of the river corridor that council wanted to move forward on. No neighbors are here yelling about it. Great sign. You know, you got, you know, so, I mean, it's just, just keep, keep, you got two slides. Keep the mojo going, man. Just go for it. It's great. Thanks. Keep it up.
Okay. We got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote. That passes 7 to 0. Okay, now it's time, final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to come down and speak?
Please state your name and address before you begin.
Dr. Correll, 2040 Summit View. I was here for the planning and zoning earlier. Thank you for having this special session, or changing the special session to regular session so we could all be heard. One clarification on the community meetings for that. They were, as required, within 1,000 feet of the planned development. Most of the people here were all the way down to Prospect, South Moore Park, Rainbow Ridge. We weren't on those initial meetings. That's where some of the confusion came in. Thanks for your time on that, and we'll work with you guys and with the developers and make sure that South End is a nice area. And then weighing in on what was just said here, you know, there's good arguments on both sides. But let's face it, let's do the math. A third of the people are going to be happy if you go one way. A third of the people are going to be happy if you go the other way. And a third of the people are just upset that you're spending time on it. So if, doing the math, the best you're going to do is make 30% of the people happy, and 60% or 66% happy. So, you know, perhaps you can table things or whatever. It's nice that we've had these discussions, but let's, you know, keep the city of Longmont in the business, forefront first, and then maybe do this kind of stuff later. Thanks a lot for your time.
Okay, now it's time, excuse me.
One more. My name is Heather Swanson. I live at 1019 Third Avenue here in Longmont. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As you've already heard, a family in our community was the target of a racist hate crime. This particular family is a model of what we all should strive to be. They raised their beautiful boys on principles of love and acceptance. Their children are intelligent, polite, and caring, and will grow into valuable members of any community they decide to call home. The parents of this family are shining examples of service to our community and our community's children. They have been a precious gift to my own children as their teacher and robotics coach. They serve our community's children with a level of dedication and care that is rarely seen. They were the targets of this ugly crime. They are also in a position to speak up and receive the intense level of support from their community that they have. If this type of overt racism and hate can be directed at a family like this, who are so well-known, respected, and loved in our community, how many families in our community have experienced this or something similar and do not feel that they have the support or the recognition or safety to speak up? We don't know how many other families have felt the terror, hurt, sadness, and anger associated with this type of crime. I expect that we are only seeing the visible tip of the iceberg. So what now? Do we stand idly by and let this be seen as just the way that it is? Do we allow our community and the victims of this hate, both seen and unseen, to remain fearful for their safety and that of their children? Do we allow some residents of our wonderful city to feel that they are less valued or belong less than others? The answer for me is emphatically no, and I hope that it is for you as well. National rhetoric has brought this type of hate to the forefront, legitimized and emboldened those who choose to define their lives through the hate of others. While we all must play a role with our elected officials to change the way that our country defines itself around acceptance and diversity, you and the people in this community hold the power to do that for Longmont. So I urge you tonight to think about this event and what it says about our city, and how our response will define what Longmont stands for into the future. Please remember this is, this in evaluating everything that comes before this body in the coming days, weeks, and years. Recognize that hate does exist in our community. It has always been here, but it is increasing in prevalence and visibility. Always ask yourself, will my words and actions move this community to a place that better combats this type of hate and moves us towards being more welcoming and supportive of everyone who calls it home? If the answer is ever no, then please reconsider your thoughts and motivations. Make sure that every statement you make as a city leader encourages and fosters trust and support for all of our residents, not just the prominent and well-known ones. And finally, please join me and my neighbors in showing more kindness to everyone that you encounter in our town. Help us make this a place where this type of hate cannot flourish, and every member of our community encounters nothing but acceptance and support from their fellow community members. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I don't know how this open period works, but since I spoke earlier, am I now allowed to speak again, or can I speak?
Can you just state your name and address?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly Lavender, 917 Reynolds Farm Lane. And I'm sorry, I ran out of time before. I got kind of rattled by some angry comments, and I wasn't able to coherently express myself. But what I was trying to share in terms of the bigger picture with history is that our policies over time, the very short history of the state of our Colorado, has ramifications to this very discussion that we're having today. The Great Western Sugar Beet Company here, Longmont, spent almost a half a million dollars recruiting labor from Mexico to come work in the sugar beet fields here, agricultural Longmont, in the 1930s. And over 30,000 people settled here, had families, built communities. And this is already on top of a legacy of what I was referring to before, where people have lived here for hundreds of years, generations, not just 50 years, or going back to their great-grandparents, but hundreds of years. And the Depression era, we saw almost a half a million Mexicans deported from Colorado. World War II, we had another labor shortage, especially in the farms. And once again, we changed our labor policies. In the 1980s, when I graduated from high school, the Oliver North Trials were going on, U.S. foreign policy in Latin America. I was in high school, and when I was a young student at CU, I had the privilege of hearing the president from Costa Rica speaking about United States citizens taking responsibility for their U.S. foreign policy actions and the monies that we poured into wars destabilizing the region in Central America, where people were besmirching people from Central America earlier. It deeply impacted my life. And when I was a young woman in my 20s, I worked with Central Americans who were trying to get refugee status. And their stories are heartbreaking. I worked with kids in detention. And bringing it back to Longmont, in the 1980s, Main Street was dead. It was a dead town. It was a dying town. By the 90s, the economy started upswing around the country. And now, today, you can get food on Main Street from all around the world. We have retail shops from immigrants from all around the world. And my daughter and I, at Easter, we were paddleboarding at Union Reservoir, and it was jam-packed with campers and picnickers. And it was predominantly immigrants. The immigrants are going to our parks. They are supporting our local businesses. They are buying properties here. I've had two situations. One were I ran out of gas, and one were my car had to get jumped, and it was immigrants who stopped and helped me. Thank you for letting me finish.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Scott Stewart, 229 Grant Street. I'm inspired. Hey, I don't know how many years you have to live here, generationally, in order to be considered a member of our society. Just because you have an Hispanic surname, and maybe your skin's a little bit darker, doesn't mean you don't belong. I mean, the hate crime that was committed to our friends, his parents are citizens. He's a citizen. His kids are citizens. It's an ignorance that this thing ever took place. And it's just disgusting that it's happened in our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else? Okay, now it's time for Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Speaking of immigrants, Cinco de Mayo is this Saturday down at Roosevelt Park. I hope you all will attend. It's always a lot of fun. Hope we see you there.
You know, I've been kind of thinking about, you know, my time here as mayor, and one of the legacies I'd like to live is, can we leave the city being more compassionate and more caring than when I found it? And, you know, I can't change my core values. You know, I learned them from my grandmother and my father. And, you know, I've always wanted to stand up and fight for the most marginalized people in our community. That's just how I'm wired. And, you know, I think we're all, we all are wired that way. Sometimes we don't communicate that, but we all want to fight for the underdog and do the right thing. And, you know, these hate crimes are appalling. I just think we need to try to communicate the best we can with each other, try to communicate with, you know, all of our citizens, and particularly the marginalized citizens. I mean, I spent three years working with Jonathan Singer, trying to get a wage-staff law passed, and finally did. But, you know, I want that to be my legacy, is making us care more about each other and our citizens. I mean, yeah, it's cool that we are real successful with our broadband, but, you know, unless we care about each other, that other stuff doesn't mean anything. You know, it's caring about our citizens and each other and protecting. That's why we are one of the safest cities in the country. If you look at our demographics, both economically and, you know, racially, we shouldn't even be in the top 10, and yet, you know, we consistently have a very safe city. And it's the work that, you know, Mike Butler does with his Belonging Revolution and other citizens. You know, we just need to support reaching down into the communities and making people feel welcome in our community. You know, I just had a roof redone on my duplex, and I don't know if this roofing company had illegal or legal, but I can tell you, I've never seen three people in my life work harder. They showed up eight o'clock in the morning, they ripped off this huge thick-shake roof, took off, you know, all the asphalt, and laid down new tar paper, and put a new roof on in like a single day. And every time I watched them, they were all three working, I mean, literally working at 110%. I mean, I've got so much respect for people with that kind of work ethic. I mean, they were just absolutely amazing. And anyway, I just hope that we can come away from this, all valuing our citizens and each other, and, you know, with a little bit more love and a little bit more ability to sit down and listen to each other and try to solve problems. So, anyway, that's my two cents for tonight.
Councilmember Christensen?
We've had quite a few weeks here. So last weekend, there was the Longmont Dog Film Fest, and the dogs were invited to the film fest. We had a whole room full of delightful movies, and we had a whole room, huge room, full of dogs of every kind and every shape and every size and every color, and none of them are growling, and none of them are barking. And I'm not comparing us to dogs. I'm saying dogs are sometimes better. We could learn something from our little dog friends by just don't, you know, it's very, very discouraging, the sort of things that are being said lately in the last couple of years and the last, the kinds of actions that are happening. If we want to all belong here, then we have to all treat each other like human beings. And I think most of us understand that. And I know everybody on this council feels the same way, and our staff, and I applaud the lady whose name I didn't catch in blonde, with the blonde hair over there. That was, whatever, all the things you said were just wonderful and appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't really have anything positive to say. But the room's empty, so let's go for it, right? No, the, I just, the thing that keeps going through my mind is I'm hearing both sides, you know? I mean, I'm picturing a bell curve, and I'm picturing us hearing from the far left and the far right of the bell curve, you know, three or four standard deviations to both sides. And the same thought keeps coming through my head. And, uh, the, the same thought keeps coming through my head again and again and again and again. First of all, if you have a Spanish last name, it doesn't mean you're Latino. Next, if you're Latino, it doesn't mean you're an immigrant. And if you're an immigrant, it doesn't mean you're undocumented or illegal. And if you're an undocumented inner immigrant, it doesn't mean you're a criminal. And if you're an undocumented man, an undocumented, undocumented immigrant criminal, it doesn't mean you should get deported. And if you're an undocumented immigrant criminal, it certainly doesn't mean you should necessarily say, stay. It's all factually dependent upon your circumstances and situation, and we've spent two city council meetings now hearing people argue from their one fixed factual situation as to why everything should be determined by their viewpoint and their one factual situation, and it drives me crazy. So I look forward to Chief Butler's comments, and I think everyone is gonna see that, uh, we've got a pretty good balance right now. And Longmont's a great city. We shouldn't hate anybody.
Well said. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, you know, it's, um, I'll agree with a lot that has been said with councilmembers as well. But it, it's, it's interesting. It's not just the marginalized people that need to have, to show respect. You have to respect for each other.
Right, absolutely.
You, you can have difference of opinions. I mean, I, I guess that's what's lost these days, is that people, you know, if my opinion's different than yours, I'm not gonna hate, I'm just pointing out in the audience, I'm not gonna hate the person, because, oh my gosh, they, they are so way out there, I, I, there's no way I could ever be friends or talk to them. And when I, when I, when I first ran for council, it was, it was interesting, I, I wanna, I, I do my best not to burn bridges, although there have been bridges, bridges that have been burned not by me, but, because if that person has a different idea, there's another, potentially another topic, another item that we can work together on, I, I don't, I've never claimed to have all the answers, 'cause I don't. But collaboration's always good, and having debate is even better. You know, the, the days are long gone of members of, of Congress. I saw it when I was, you know, the last vestiges of, of when I was there, and you had two members of Congress have a really good debate, one won, one person won, one person lost, then they looked at each other, kind of hugged, said, "Hey, let's go have dinner. Let's go have a beer and a dinner, and dinner." That's gone. And that has now filtered to this level. You know, whether I think that this is a, a political ploy by this group or by that group, is this, is this a, a purposeful resolution or ordinance? You know, again, I, the, one of the last speakers said it great, "A third of the people are gonna be pissed off, another third are gonna be pissed off, another third..." What the hell are you doing? Work on the business of, of the city. That's what I was elected, hopefully elected to do. And, you know, there are times that we make decisions that residents hate and don't like, but there's still the tried cooperation between the seven of us, city staff, and residents, and residents with each other. You know, and, you know, I, I've been questioned several times over my tenure on council. You're the, you're, you're one of the last, you know, um, you know, you are the, the Hispanic on council.
Oh, you're Latino?
Yeah, I get that, too. But in some people's eyes, I'm not. Yeah, just because I, I do have a, you know, a Latin surname. So does my wife. She doesn't, she's Anglo. My daughters are, you know, biracial. But if we take the time to try to invest in each other, instead of trying to beat the crap out of each other, goes a long way. Not only, you know, in the rest of the world, maybe in Congress and State House, but I'd really hate, you know, again, the seven of us, you, we're all, I, you are all fantastic people. Um, we have our differences, but I'm not gonna go, "Oh, my gosh, I can't talk to that person, because, gosh, they voted on this way on, on that one." You know? So from hi, high on top, whether you have the, the greatest, you know, if you're mayor or president, or to the lowest person who doesn't have a job and looking for something to do, have respect for each other. That's, that's the main thing.
Okay, city manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.